All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen, town constituents, regular meeting held here on May 7th, 2019. At this time, I'd like to call the board to order and have an acceptance of the agenda.
So, second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Harrison, seconded by Ms. Curran.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'd like to start this evening out just with a quick comment, and I really think it's serious that people listen to this, and it's not just the people who are here, but also people who are in TV land and who are videotaping this. You know, there are a lot of people who work extremely hard in this town and have continued to work very hard in this town. There are employees who go unnamed, who dedicate themselves to the town, to all of us. And it's unfortunate when you find someone who decides to ridicule and say terrible things about a family who's dedicated themselves to this town for the police, for the fire, for teaching, for postal work, for generations. There are many great families who've made our town what it is today, and there will be many families and people who do it tomorrow. But unfortunately, I'm sad to have to say that in my 12 years, I've never seen the horrible things that have been put on social media about the Stewart family, and in particular, your chief, your police chief, the person who's dedicated his life for health and safety for all of us, Michael Stewart. And I feel compelled to tell you this, and I think it's important that people understand that defamation and slander of character, of somebody's reputation, not just themselves, but their family, their children, their parents, should not be acceptable in any way, shape, or form. And I am calling out one of the candidates for this seat that will be filled, my seat, in less than two weeks, and that is William Tivitts. It's a shame that he is saying the terrible things that are blatant lies to smear this person and his family. So I only just mention it now because frankly, that is not becoming a select person. It is not becoming of any person to attack people. It's fine to disagree. It's fine to say, "I don't agree with you, and I'm not going to vote for you." But I want to make sure as the chair of this board that he has the full support of this board and of this town going forward as a family. That being said, I'd like to say... Representative Watkins? Representative Fleeson?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to give you a quick shout-out. I know this is your last meeting, so I want to thank you for all the service in the town. I really appreciate it. I know it's sometimes probably a thankless job, but I know that, as you said, the residents of Situ are grateful for all the good work that Chief Stewart does. We're grateful for your service to the town as well. I'd also like to thank all my friends and neighbors that are here, that showed up to this meeting. I love seeing civic engagement, so I really appreciate that. I was asked to speak at the very beginning. I have two more events that I have to hit in the district in Marfield tonight. But I just wanted to say that I'm here not only as a state representative for Situ, but also as a resident of Cedar Point. And I'm here to ask the board to hold off on issuing the contract for the new sewer system, the pressurized sewer system that's been proposed for Cedar Point. In 2016, the CDM study mentions a pressurized system. It also mentions the need for a study to look at the issues at Cedar Point. We don't necessarily know if it's the main, if it's the laterals, if it's one lateral, if the whole system's junk. And what I am here to do is ask you to hold off on the issuance of the contract until we conduct a study, until we see the results of that study. And I've talked with Senator Patrick O'Connor's office, as well as the Baker administration. Once we see the results of that study, we're more than happy to and open to working with the administration to change the language in the study for the Mass Works Act. So thank you for taking me out of turn here. I really appreciate any consideration to what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Any other Walk-ins? If this is related to the sewer... We're going to get to that subject later in our agenda.
Yeah, I know. I don't... I know that I'll later discuss that. I just have a quick question for John. Well, first of all, thank you for your service, Sean. 12 years, wasn't it?
Yes.
A long time. It's a thankless job at times, I know. And you're always getting used to it all, and I really appreciate everything you've done for the town.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to thank Representative Kearney for coming and supporting what we're going to be talking about tonight. But right now, Sean, I just would like to know how you see the discussion going for the Cedar Point project. Is the Board of Selectmen going to speak first, or do you want us to speak first?
So what we'll do is, when we get to the discussion, I have probably many of you here for it. It is going to be 7:55. Maybe a little sooner, maybe a little later. We'll have the presentation, read one with Kevin, and then about the current status of it, the contract. Then we'll open it up for discussion with people and residents of the town.
Okay, thank you.
So if you're here for that only, feel free to get up, walk around. You're welcome to do that. Any other Walk-ins? Seeing none, I'd like to turn it over to the report of the town administrator.
Sure. I'll be quick, because I know most people aren't here to listen to this. Ice pigging. We finished the last one of ice pigging for the spring today. We did Third Cliff. Once again, we saw fairly good results if you consider seeing black water coming out. Good results. We've done Country Way. We've done the adjacent side streets, Old Open Buck with the Drift Way, Second and Third Cliffs. So we've pigged a big section of town. We've got some very graphic videos we're going to put up showing people how bad the water is in those areas. We've got good results right now. We're going to continue flushing. The reservoir is full. It's spilling over. As long as it spills over, we'll flush. Once it stops spilling, we'll stop flushing and conserve the water. So we're hoping to see some real good results from the waters, the pigging and the flushing this spring, but we'll see how it looks. Several other projects underway in town. Reconstruction of Egypt Beach parking lot is going on now. That'll be done by Memorial Day. New parking lot, new drainage. We'll also be installing a shower stall in there. It'll type like a Peggity. Roach Field, covered parking lots being redone. A new parking lot is being added in the outfield. If we have funds left over at the end, we'll actually build a sidewalk along the outside and connect those, so people will see those. The Oceanside Water Main Replacement Project is scheduled to start next week. That will begin with the installation of temporary water services. We expect that will take two to three months. This is one of the last pre-1936 cast iron pipes. It broke last week, so it's a good thing that it's getting done. But because of the number of connections we have to make, it's going to be a long project with the gas mains and the existing pipes that are down there. The fundraisers meeting is tomorrow at noon. We only have one article on town meetings. Town meeting is Monday night. The high school, 7 o'clock. And the town election is the 18th. And we will be discussing the ballot question for the senior senate will be on that ballot also. Finally, just to update the board, I went to Norwell Town Meeting last night. Not because I really enjoy going to town meetings all the time, but they were doing an app called Votes, B-O-A-T-Z, on your smartphone to try out electronic voting at town meeting. You would vote through your smartphone. I wanted to see how that went. They actually ended up voting against it. When you would go in, you'd download the app. You'd get a QR code from the clerk's office. You'd scan it in. That was your voting number for the day. And then when the voting would open up, you'd go through a series of buttons and actually vote. It took about 45 minutes to get set up. The town meeting just kind of waited in the middle of town meeting. And it was a lot slower than I thought. Town meeting is actually faster, just doing regular votes. So although I think it's a good idea, I think at this point, probably not a road we're going to get on yet until you get a little better at it. It was very confusing for some people who aren't real technology savvy. If you didn't have a smartphone, they gave you an iPad. It costs $10,000-plus per meeting. If you don't have enough bandwidth on your Wi-Fi and people are using their data. People with one cellphone had good data. People in other cell service had so-so data.
The key is you have to be there, right?
You have to be there. Right, because you get the QR code. When you go in, you scan the QR code with your phone, and that gives you your unique voter number for town meeting.
So it really doesn't address the concern that we hear about participation of people coming?
Yeah, well, I don't think it's legal in Massachusetts to participate in a town meeting without being at a town meeting. But there is a school thought that it's very difficult at town meeting to raise your hand to vote for something that your neighbor is opposed to. So by having a secret ballot, you would get different votes. And also, you know, in one case in Linfield, we had almost 900 people at a town meeting on a standing vote, and it was a one-vote difference. So obviously, with people counting, you had to thought, well, maybe we should do it again with an electronic vote. It would be much cleaner. But it is a little bit different than the electronic voting where you get the keypad. That's actually quicker. But since you don't know how many people show up at a town meeting, you don't know how many keypads to get. So you get 600, 300 people show up. You've wasted money. You get 600, 1,000 people show up you can't use. But I thought it was a good idea. We'll keep an eye on it. As I said, it costs about $10,000 per meeting to do. But they actually ended up voting down electronic voting at the end of the meeting.
Is that $10,000 on top of what it normally costs? Or was that...
That's just the electronic voting.
Just the electronic.
Yeah, just the electronic voting. But we'll keep an eye on it and see. But we're actually ahead of them doing the electronic check-in, which I think people really like. So that's all I have, except for Pizza Palooza was outstanding and crowded. They ran out of pizza early this year, so... I don't know, there were different categories. Seth's still here?
Let's see, the judge vote with CP's. Regular vote was Harbor House, and there was a third one the kids voted by.
So that's all you got.
Jim, one quick thing on the Egypt Beach. Then we're also talking about leaving an outlet there for bathrooms to go there at some point in time?
Yeah, Kevin, at this point, there's no plan for the bathroom. We'll come back to do that later.
But it is something that could be cut out because we're going to put a building on. We'd have to cut it out with the foundation anyways.
So we're going to do the whole thing, and then if we come back. It's right next to Tampa, so it won't be hot.
Right.
Did you find out what happened in Goasew with respect to the sewer that they voted on?
I emailed them. I haven't got back.
Is that last week?
It's supposed to be tonight.
Well, it's tied to...
It's supposed to be tonight.
There's some chairs if anybody wants. At least there's one here, maybe two or something. Ladies, too late, gentlemen?
That's it for me.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah, I just, a quick question. John, what are you doing next Tuesday?
Nothing.
So just take a second. A few people have alluded to this is John's last meeting. He's been on the Board of Selectmen for 12 years, and he chose not to go to reelection. And this is his last Tuesday night meeting. He will be at a town meeting on Monday, but then the election will happen, and someone else will be here for the next meeting. One thing, we got a list of all the accomplishments that the Board of Selectmen had since John's been on the board. It's amazing. But one thing I wanted to point out is, John served on the zoning board of appeals for six years before this, which may be more difficult than being a selectman at times. It's quite a more difficult role. So he almost has 20 years of service to this community. And that's quite amazing. Not only does it take up a ton of your time, as we know, meetings, selecting meetings, GBA meetings, but every other liaison that you're associated with. But it also takes a lot of your family time. All of us up here know that. So he did it during the prime of his kid's youth. So baseball games, basketball games, coaching opportunities, dinners, awards banquet, concerts, all this sort of stuff that many times played second field while they happened to be at a meeting to talk about something. And it's really a sacrifice that you made. And although we said earlier in the meeting that it's good riddance, he really isn't. We like doing this. We don't like the bad parts. We don't like, you know, some of the criticism that we get personally. But we do enjoy doing it. We do it for the interest of the town. And that's what I would say about John is, every decision that he's made for the years that I've... So John and I have been on the board together. I've been here for 11 years, and John was here before me at 12. Everything has been professional. Everything has been in the best interest of the town. Over the years, we've disagreed, we've agreed, but it only lasted maybe to the end of that meeting. But every meeting, we come back and we start again and again. All of us here are trying to do what's in the best interest of the town. You really did a great job doing that, John. You separated yourself. You're in a difficult situation because you happen to work in town. So people can come to your office. People see you at lunch. People come up to you, and you're much more accessible than other people. And it's difficult. And you handled it with dignity. You handled it with professionalism. And you spoke your mind, and you did what was right for the town. There's too many things to read, but, I mean, look, there's six pages of things that we accomplished over the last 12 years, and you championed many, many of them. You know, each one of us have these projects that we were more involved in than others. And when I went through here, there were just circle after circle where you really led the charge on that. And it's a lot of work. It's a lot of energy. And I personally respect you, and I respect the effort that you put into it. I'll miss you, and we'll see you outside of this venue. But great job. It was a pleasure working with you.
Wait, we know you like to talk a lot, but you have to give the rest of us a few minutes to say something as well. So I know Sean's been here the longest, but we'll just go in order here, sort of, for the longest. But they had to work with the least, but probably half your tenure. So I'm not going to reiterate everything that Tony said, but it certainly has been a pleasure. You taught me a lot about government, about how things work, how to look a little bit more differently at issues than the person that we came in. We haven't always agreed on the way we get to the endpoint. But at the end of the day, I think, many of you may not realize this, but I think this is a good example of a board that tries to arrive at a consensus for the greater good of Situ. And I think you've been a great leader from that aspect. And I appreciate everything that you taught me, and I wish you well. But I miss you. Well, you're going to... Sean gets to go last.
I have nothing left to say.
Yeah, no, I just want to echo, as the new kid coming in, all, you know, ready to take on the world, having your leadership and example to, you know, have best to address some very difficult situations is I very much appreciate it. So don't go far.
And I'll start off by saying I'm very glad you're not going to leave in town. I really enjoy... Look forward to enjoying bumping into you around town and still picking you up for different things. I don't know where the 12 years went. I know it's been 12 years, but I don't know. It's gone by so quick. I'm sure Tony just forgot to thank your wife, because I'm sure there are a lot of nights you were running out to a meeting, and kids crying, and your wife's trying to feed them dinner. And I know what that's all about. So I want to thank her publicly, and all your children for those events that Tony said you missed. Look, what I really am going to miss is being able to call you, whether it's selectman business or your profession, whatever it is, you always get back to me. And you are very, very, very professional. Like Tony had said, we don't always agree. The next meeting is behind us. It's history. If I didn't know better, I swear you were from this town. You're so passionate about the history of this town. You know more about the history of this town than I do. And you're from Vermont, which really surprises me. Just go ahead and show us that you just really care about this town. And thank you very much. I've been enjoying working with you every single week. Really tried. Thank you.
So we have everyone in the office, Lorraine, Michelle, Town Hall, the board. We want to thank you for the local member to get for you, so you can remember your time here. So thank you.
Well, I didn't anticipate... I kind of anticipated something to be said. And I'm sorry that I actually was thinking of keeping my remarks to the end, but I might as well do it now if anything's inappropriate. It has been a disdain, honor, and a pleasure and a privilege to represent you folks for the town of Situ for the past 12 years. There are times where people disagree, and there are times when people agree. It's never easy to be a selectman. You know, as Dave said earlier, I remember the first person I mentioned about running for selectman, and they said to me, "John, it's a thankless job. Why do you want to do it?" And, you know, I committed to doing it because I wanted to help. I realized when I worked for U.S. Senate after college that I didn't want to work on the federal level. I thought it was too different. It wasn't transparent. I didn't think that people were genuine. I always thought at the local level, you can always make a difference. You can talk to people. The difference is that you do talk to people, and when you anger people, they don't forget you. But I always felt that's very important. And when you get into a community, be actively involved. That was something I supported by my parents. I've had the pleasure of working with Paul Beatty, Joe Norton, Rick Murray, and also Mario Tool. But I have to tell you, I've had the pleasure of working with this current board, a selectman. I know my time with Karen has been somewhat short, about a year and a half. But we've been able to accomplish things and move town in a continual direction, continual. I have to tell you, working with Maura, she did the best job I've ever seen as a chairman the year that she was chairman, when we lost our town administrator and she quit on us. That was a really tough year. And I have to tell you, she did a phenomenal job, better than I could have done it. And I've been very fortunate to work with her for the past four years. My two, shall we say, pillars of support, not only in Sean. We're only as good as the sum of our parts. We come up with policy, and the two folks who decide whether or not we agree with what our policy is, whether you agree that we should be doing this or agree to doing that. And there's so many different facets of this town that it's so hard. You can focus on one issue, sewer. You could focus on seawalls. You could focus on open space. You can focus on, you know, schools. You can focus on water. You can focus on sewer. The long and short of it is that there's so many issues. And as a team, we work together. You're one of five, and it's important to maintain that because without it, you're not one. And it never should be without a one. So I've been very fortunate that we, together, have accomplished those things that are listed, Tony. It's not just me, it's all of us at various points in time. And I did look back over the 12 years. I realized that we've accomplished a great deal as a board. And I hope that the board continues to try to address a lot of the issues of the town. I want to thank Jim, I want to thank Lorraine, Michelle. They've been excellent. The department heads between Kevin Cafferty, Nancy Holt, Mary, Pamela Cottley, I have to say, John Murphy, Mike Stewart. They've been working extremely hard. And you know, one person I want to shout out to is Tom Grimes. Tom Grimes is a person who works in our town law. He's an unspoken guy who works. He's there. He's cleaning the snow out of the way. He's on the lines. He's making sure that the building's maintained. And he's a great worker, a great town employee. I also want to thank, you know, my prior secretary, Kim Donovan, and Sheila Manning. They worked extremely hard for us and made us look good. And that's what happens, you know. We're here, but it's the people who work behind us who make it for us. You know, there's so many people to thank. But the one person I really, truly want to thank is my wife, because to Sean's point, you never realize a big loss until you lose the town. She's been a backbone to me for this 12 years. There are times I regret doing certain things, but she's supported me all through it. Been running for reelection. She was 100% behind me. And she is going to be extremely happy, you know, going to be home and doing different things. But I have to say, whether you're spouse, male or female, you really need to have them behind you when you do this for public service because you do take a lot of knocks sometimes. But also, you know, you take away their time. You take away your family time. You take away time for commitments and things. So she's been a saint all through it. And Austin Berg is by far my best fan and my best friend and my true love. And I have to say, I want to thank her for allowing me to do it because without her assent, I couldn't be doing this. And she committed to this as much as I did. And so I want to thank her for doing it.
So after that, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So we should probably get the meeting going, but I hate to say this, there is one last thing I have to say. As I said to you, you know, you're only as good as the sum of your parts. That's the key. Private business, business, and public business. We also want to celebrate and recognize somebody who's had a birthday recently, but more importantly, a five-year commitment to the town. And we want to thank her, it's our secretary, Lorraine Devlin. Devlin, she works extremely hard. I mean, she's there Sundays, making sure that the stuff is ready. She's there Saturdays. If you arrive at Town Hall, you'll see her car. And it's not a 95 job. That's the difference. These people commit to it. And we see it, and it's public service that you folks see. We don't realize it, but it's people like that, the dedication. So on behalf of the board, I wanted to say thank you very much. And we do have your five-year certificate for the ten-year, and also some flowers.
So sweet. Thank you. Thank you. Why Liam yet? Why is Liam yet?
Let's start at the seven fifteen discussion vote, special event application, application for the duck derby. Barbara Quinlan, I know she's here. How are you? Back in Citrofax.
Yes.
So you are looking, sorry, I got a trouble computer right now, I'm going to talk too long. You're looking for permit to be able to do the derby for ducks, I guess you could say? No bumping, right? There's no disqualifications, right?
No disqualification.
So you're allowed to do that?
Yes.
And that is, let me see, the date?
September fourteenth. September fourteenth.
And you want to just briefly say what it is, what you're doing?
Sure. So my name is Mike Matasok, I'm a teacher at Citrofax High School, a resident of the town, and I'm also the proud new president of the new five oh one C three Friends of Citrofax, it's a nonprofit supporting the mission of Citrofax. And so Barbara has been instrumental in helping get this started, it's really fantastic. And so we wanted to plan a fundraiser to support our mission, to support Citrofax as well as to start a high school scholarship. So the event date would be Saturdays, September fourteenth, and some towns have similar events around, you know, it's like a rubber duck derby where people, you know, pledge and certain amount of money or buy a certain amount of ducks and then we release the ducks and they kind of float down a river and someone wins a prize. So, excuse me, the, the date would be Saturdays, September fourteenth, and the general location would be at St. Mary's Ball Field and Parish Center and on the street, running along, which is Everfoss.
Everfoss.
Yes, and so the bridge, the proposed dropping point would be that bridge, which is the Brook, the Peggy Brook. And so the idea would be that it would be a family-friendly event, you know, with activities and games happening at the Parish Center and the parking lot and the ball field. And then the duck drop, I guess we could call it, would be sort of at a specific time to limit, obviously, the closing of the street, we don't want to disrupt traffic, we know it's a neighborhood, but we do have, you know, some logistics here about that, about traffic control, about police detail.
Questions, John? Just check the tide, so you don't.
Yeah. Yeah. We need to go for eleven, better than four hundred times.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. When you drop them over the bridge into, how far, where, how far, where are you going to collect them?
So, yeah, so the plan is for them to go, no, not that far. So they will go in on the harbor side of the bridge, under the bridge, and then they'll just go shortly into the marsh really, so they'll be corralled there so people can still view from the ballpark if they've got small children with them or from the sidewalk side on the bridge.
Okay, so we're going to come under the bridge?
Yeah, they have to come under the bridge, yeah.
Great.
In the backup, it said the harbor master wanted to watch a practice round. Do you do a practice round?
So for now, up until this point, all we've done is a stick drop, like a stick, stick type of thing, yeah, just to see how it goes. And so it won't last very long, two to three minutes, I think, for the ducks to race. And then the one thing we plan to do is the, we're very mindful of gathering all the ducks afterwards and cleaning up. And so we aim to have some people in kayaks down there, kind of keep corralling to one direction and picking up water.
Do you think you're actually going to have a big, I saw the picture, it's like a big truck full, if it goes well?
It depends on how many we sell, we're hoping for a big truck full and if it's not a big truck full, we'll dump them from bins or something like that, yeah. So we get to decide whether we're dropping them in from a boat on the water side or over the bridge.
Oh, yes.
Questions? Motion? Questions for the audience? Go ahead.
Move to approve a special event permit to Barbara Quinlan, Friends of Citrofax for the duck derby on September fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, from nine AM until twelve thirty PM.
Motion by Ms. Vivian Nani, second by Ms. Curran, on favor.
Hi.
All right, seven twenty five discussion vote, all right, seven twenty discussion vote, outdoor entertainment permits for Riva on August second, twenty nineteen. Care of time? Yeah, very good. I'm all right. Good. So this is kind of the usual, is it not? Approval that you've done before? Music on Friday?
Of course.
It's on Heritage Days, correct?
Uh, yeah, the Friday prior, the first Friday.
Don't be caught, were there any issues last year?
We've never had any issues. The only thing I can point out is last year, I was going to get a police detail, which I did, but then I think it was short-staffed. But there was certain police out there, we didn't have any issues, but we didn't have to pay for our police detail because it wasn't available, so.
Questions?
Do you know your music yet? Have you contracted your bands?
Um, I think we're going to, we've done the last four years, Alice Collins, and then before that, I actually might be doing it with my band, which I haven't done in a while, so I'm not going to say that that's a definite, but other than that, it might be just like an acoustic singer-songwriter choir.
Just with the Collins Band that they are so popular, so definitely a police detail.
Yeah, I'm totally willing to do that.
No, we haven't had any issues.
No, I mean, a couple of years ago, there were some things we talked about and going up on the roof and that sort of stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, which I made clear in the last session.
So it gets, it's a very popular venue, it's very crowded, it's fun, it's a fun activity. So as long as you have someone there, enough people to manage the number of people on that patio, I think.
For sure, yeah.
It's Heritage Days, so it's a pretty active.
We've like doubled the amount of security we have over the last couple of years, so just to make sure that everything is.
And keep them discreet, you know, what you do, good job doing that last year.
Right? Motion, please.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Riva Restaurant located at one sixteen Front Street for a band on the patio, Friday, August second, two thousand nineteen, from five PM to eleven PM, pending scheduling of a police detail from five PM to closing.
Motion by Ms. Curran, second by Ms. Harris, on favor.
Hi. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to seven forty five discussion vote, Waterways Commission, Town Council Recommendation for Marine-related Matters. Brian Kelly, who are you?
Good evening.
Gentlemen, good evening. This is for special counsel, correct?
That is correct. So I believe that the board is aware that we've got, we've received grants on a project and it seems to have been stalled in the Department of the D E P and what we're looking to do is hire outside counsel who's worked in the town in the past to assist us in moving this to a favorable ownership. The, at the last Waterways meeting, we had this vote, gave nothing to make that recommendation to you, please.
Questions for the board?
The only comment would be that those fees would come out of the Waterways Plum, so it's not, it's not a taxpayer event, it's, it will come out of the Waterways Plum.
Yes, we understand that.
And it's clearly something that we need in this case because we could jeopardize losing the, what's it, two million dollars?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Sorry, a hundred thousand dollar grant, so makes sense to me.
Right.
I guess I'm, I'm just curious why it's stalled on D E P. Hi, Laura.
If we can answer that question, we probably could resolve it, right?
Well, the ideal is that we want somebody who's specialized in this.
That is correct.
Close to a general attorney, somebody who knows D E P, dealing with D E P and also if there's any further forms of litigation or action, he or she, in this case she, has her experience in doing it, which is beneficial ultimately.
Do you know Tara, or are you familiar with her?
I know her background, yeah.
Okay. Because of no background on her, so I don't, we're going to approve this. Do you have any history?
I've spoken to her.
Okay.
Very impressive.
So she, Jane in the Day has been involved with some other town projects we had, notably with the lease for the Citrope Works. She orchestrated that with the help of the Waterways Commission to come up with a right solution and I think we've had a very favorable relationship in that group.
Expertise in Chapter ninety-one Marine Law, she represents the Marine Trade Industries, as well, Yale graduate, so we won't hold out against her.
Well, the Marine Industries in particular, because that's a whole separate part of the law, if you really need to know the details. No, so that's, that's always important. I don't. All right, any discussions, any questions?
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move to approve hiring of counsel for Waterways Commission Maritime-related Issues.
Second. Motion by Ms. Vivian Nani, seconded by Mr. Harris, on favor. Hi. Thank you very much. All right, move on to a discussion vote, Archives Disaster Recovery Plan. Jody's here?
Thanks, Ed.
Don't get Betty, is Betty here?
No, she's not.
I think it's just she. You're in it.
I have my one-page thing. It's.
It looks great.
The number, it's the phone numbers and evacuation procedures, critical things and then water, because that's probably the biggest.
So I can start, they came before us before and went over this plan, which is very professional stuff, and then I just had a comment about getting a one-pager, because nobody's going to read a thirty-page plan when there's water coming out of a pipe in the basement. So they went back and did a laminated one-page thing that says, if water's coming out of a pipe in the basement, call this number or do this or do that. So I think that's where you'll get that all around the area down there, so in the case of disaster, someone knows exactly what to do. And the plan is comprehensive, it's, it's very detailed, it goes into policy and everything and so I think you'd be asking a great job on.
Andrew Laston, thank you.
Questions for the audience? Motion?
Look at for us, let them vote for the disaster recovery plan.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by, Mr. Harris, on favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Going to move on to a seven forty discussion vote, Monument to the East Horizon, that father, John Sullivan. Sullivan, how are you?
Great. Good evening.
That would be, did you submit anything, John?
I've got, I've got some things, I just wanted to, no, I wasn't sure if I was going to make the cut, so. The board had asked for three things. You would ask for a sort of a, an image, if I could just pass those down. An image, language that would be on the back. And then whether or not, or I believe, Mrs. Vivian Nani asked me to get input from the Historical Commission, the Historical Society. First, I did speak to a representative of both the Historical Commission and Historical Society, they're behind this, and then there's a rough image, this just depicts what it would look like. You have before your previous meeting, the language that would be on it, and then thanks to the help of Brenda O'Connor, the chair of the Citro West Port Group, she really helped craft this language that we would suggest might be perfect for that, although we're obviously open to any ideas, suggestions or edits that we might have.
All right, it says, the proclamation of the Irish Republic, which took place in Dublin in April, on April twenty-fourth, nineteen sixteen, is honored around the world for our wherewithal for freedom and human rights are celebrated. Citro, the most Irish town in America, has been honored annually since the anniversary of the Easter Rising in twenty sixteen at the base of Citro Harbour. We dedicate, we dedicate this monument to all the people who love freedom and to those who have fought and continue to fight for life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness around the world. And welcome back.
And welcome back. So.
Questions from the board or thoughts?
Nothing on the other side.
The proclamation that was, that I gave you last night.
I'm sorry.
No, don't have to read that into the record.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I really like the verbiage, I think you might, you might need to just take a look at in Citro, the most Irish town in America, and kind of date that, I mean, we're the most Irish town in America today.
Do you want?
Not that I think it'll change, but I don't, whatever, we don't need to talk about it tonight, but I think it needs to sort of just be grounded.
Well, the reason it's in quotes is because it is at this moment in time.
Right.
And since twenty-ten, the most Irish town in America, that's subject to change with the next census.
Exactly.
At this moment, and that's why it's in quotation marks versus it not being quoted. But.
I defer my literary agent down, I have to respond. It jumped right out at me, too. I like it from an economic development standpoint, because it ties into a lot of the things we're doing and reinforces it, but this is a permanent monument and I think that this state, this, this stands quite well with in Citro, it is honored annually. I don't even think we need to put it in, you know, why it is, I think that is, as a permanent monument, almost, you know, that can be an ethical thing more than anything. But I mean, I would defer to you guys to think through that a little bit more.
I mean, that language can be deleted if.
I think it works well without it, actually.
All right.
You could just put a year.
Or a comment.
Is it going to be something that signifies the date that you're doing?
It would be, a date inscribed on it, but.
Oh, okay.
So that was going to tell you when.
Yes.
That either way works for me, but it did, it did actually jump that as.
Does the board have any feelings about it because if you do, it can be changed.
Well, I think you're hearing our feelings.
So it can be stretched, that's not, not a problem.
I think what you're looking, the guidance you're looking for, John, is to be able to have some kind of context, which is what this does.
Yes.
Puts it in context.
Right, exactly.
I think when you come up with a final, because I think that's what the board wanted, the final, maybe a procedure afterward.
Yes.
Before it goes to, you can't say.
Right.
To your actual, when they start targeting, you might want to just come back and say, here it is, it's getting ready to go. Is that acceptable?
Yes. It's the quote thing, that almost says something, in Citro, in honor of its, you know, long his, long heritage or something, more general speaking, that puts it in context, that works, yeah?
Sure.
But I think that's what the board wanted, they just wanted to know something behind the monument that would put it in context.
Yes.
I think you captured pretty much ninety-five percent of it, or Brenda has.
Brenda has.
And at that point, then I'd say, maybe you've got to be able to go forward, start it, and then before you finalize the final inscription, I guess, I'd say just one last review.
That's not.
Prepare to the board.
Okay. Move the dimensions. The dimensions are four feet, or six feet, and the base is going to be five feet by fourteen inches.
So it's seven feet, two inches high in total?
No, the, the base itself is fourteen inches in width and five feet in length. The thickness of the stone is eight inches.
But you said it's six feet.
Six feet, yes.
So six feet on top of fourteen inches is seven.
But we're straight. The, the width of the base is fourteen inches, I don't know how, the height is not, I think it's about a foot or so.
So it's going to be like seven feet high?
Yes.
Pretty, it's big.
Yes, but there's a lot of language that has to go on that stone, as you know, so.
Well, I'd also like to make sure we actually determine, if it's this big, seven feet high, I want to make sure that we're engaged in the placement of it, too, once we get a little bit closer, I'm really not clear on exactly where it's going since we're renovating the bandstand, so it's a little loosey for me right now, so I, that's tall, I expected it to be seven feet tall.
As you, as you face the bandstand, it would be on a grassy area to the left and the monument company that I've been speaking with would supervise the installation. As a matter of fact, one of the, one of the people I spoke to said, you've got to make sure that it's stable so it cannot be tipped over and so it would be, there'd be rebar reinforcements so that it would be stable, but this is what this company.
Can you pick the proclamation, something that should be, it just seemed really tall for me.
There's a, there's a lot of.
The insurance.
I, I am going to try, maybe I can see if it can be smaller, but I'd like to also get the ball rolling to at least get the engraving done, I'll see if it can be done in a smaller, maybe six feet in height.
Yeah, because I just worry about the weather down there, too, the higher our structure is, susceptible it is to be blown over, right? I mean, you don't want a tall building to stay up. Yeah.
But it, it won't be tall in there, so.
But I think you just need to have it all in perspective.
Yeah.
What I would like to see us do is like continue, but I think we need to operate in a little bit, in conjunction with the bandstand rehabilitation, and make sure we're all talking to one another and that it all fits nicely together instead of one group putting something here and then we come back and we fix the bandstand and we don't have that total vision. So that, that's, I'm not, that's all I would like to see done.
If I could respond to that, but maybe then the, the start of the monument would be in conjunction with the construction of the bandstand and maybe in synchronicity with one another, that way, one would not be done without the other, they'd all be done at the same time.
That would be great.
Sure.
We need to put parties together.
Plus, we have to raise the funds, because this is all going to be private funded to do this, although as I shared with the board, there's been a great level of interest in this, so.
I will just say, I was, I'm surprised by the size also, I thought it was like a four-foot, it's small, so. I don't know how many words, I mean, obviously you don't want it in a school so it can't be read, there's got to be some halfway medium where it's legible as well as prominent but not overbearing, so maybe you can.
I will see. See what options are. Smaller, but you know, obviously I'd like to get the ball rolling as possible tonight.
So in that case, then, can you, I think the ball's rolling, it's just a question, maybe smaller scale, John.
Yes, I will do that.
And then maybe more of the exact location, maybe if you could, maybe get a copy of the assessor's map of Cold Parkway, maybe we can then see the exact location where you're proposing it be, which makes sense.
Yeah, Laurie, I, do you know when we're scheduled to work on the bandstand? I mean, I understand our, on Sunday, we get released in July.
Right, we're just working on the project.
Okay.
Planning right now for dates.
And are you the lead on that project?
Yes.
Okay.
Kevin Kelly and myself.
Okay, so can I?
Kevin Kelly will be doing the layout of the bandstand.
All right, so can I ask that you connect with Kevin Kelly and Lorraine and sit down and kind of work the whole thing out together?
Of course.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the location, I'm sure you guys will work together and figure it out, I just think you have to figure out what, what the right, and maybe we should all go down and look and see what a seven-foot, four-foot structure.
Speaking of.
It's a little smaller than John.
Yeah, I think you're hearing that the board likes the idea, likes the location, likes the concept, and you address the contextual, so we just have to work out.
Question?
Yes.
Yes.
Ian Forbine, it has been suggested that possibly, at a height of seven feet, would this monument be better served to be over at the Mossing Museum, where it's not going to be weathered and the Mossing Museum has so much about Irish history, et cetera, would that not be a better place for it? The Cold Parkway is sort of under review with economic development, Lorraine is going forward with the bandstand, I agree with Mara, I'm not sure that this is, not that she said it, the best place, we have an anchor go into the right of the building, I don't care where that came from, and so you end up using space that might be better served for something else. I would strongly suggest that they think about it at the Mossing Museum. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think we can just, you've got to think about it, John, where you want it to be, I don't know that the people that manage the Mossing Museum want the structure that we have, that sort of.
Right, and I think, as you know, at the last meeting, the reason that this, that location was suggested is first, it is a great spot for visibility, people are naturally drawn to the harbor, there's a walkway right there, and it's also right next to the place where we've honored this event for the last four years.
All right, so you could maybe take a look at the scale a little bit, John, and then circle back with Lorraine.
Sure.
And then, on behalf of, and then probably, once that's figured out, where the, the reconstruction, renovation of the bandstand, part of the back of the board, just for one final time.
Okay.
And I think, you know, because you're looking to raise funds, too, right? I suspect you could raise the funds now, to try to, at least, make sure you have an idea, so that it can happen to be taken away.
No, I don't think, frankly, I don't think the raising of the funds is really the problem at the moment, but it's been a great level of interest since this was first honored back four years ago. This is just a continuation of this sanctuary, all the things that's going on in Citro.
Good. All right, but I think that works, right?
Okay, all right, so come back before the board.
Just email Lorraine.
I think the source, just the, the thing, and then, in the back of the board, the following, it's fine, at least.
Okay.
And if you're, you're going to have a seven-foot or something, or six-foot or whatever, you might need something just for scale of the board, I want to put it on, give a sense of the state or something, how are you there?
All right, that's not a problem. Great. You're welcome. Thank you, Walter, John, thanks for your many years of service to the town.
Going to move on to seven forty-five Athletic Fields Contract, see Mark Novak is here, Mark, See Mark Novak is here, Mark, how are you?
Good.
Now, this is in the paper, should we go down to the board?
It is, yes.
Yep.
These are the bids.
There's two options.
Yes. So, went out to bid, the bids came back.
Yes.
We had three, it looks like.
We had three bids.
Same bids. One ranging from nine point eight million to one that's fourteen point eight million. The middle one was.
Twelve point eight.
Oh, I'm, I'm doing the bid alts.
Oh, okay.
Let's go straight to the project. So the base bids for, just without the alternates, were nine point one, almost nine point two. The second was nine point five, and the third one was twelve point eight.
Yes.
And then you had alternate one, which is a resilient underlayment, which is kind of like that cushion, correct?
Yes.
It's kind of a, it's a pattern. And then the other alternate was, it's basically, those alternates are all the same price, anywhere between four hundred thirty thousand, four hundred fifty.
Correct.
Alternate two is the organic infill, so this is not the plastic pellets piece of the actual cedar or something, organic material?
Yeah, depending on the bidder, they did different materials. Uh, the low bidder actually did kind of a, a ground up coconut husk and rice husk type infill. So it's, it's all organic materials.
And that range from a hundred and seventy thousand, ninety thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand.
Correct.
Uh, the one that, the first one with Argus, what were they, what's their, their most expensive?
That was, uh, the ninety thousand dollar alternate where it's going to be the, the wood.
Wood.
Wood infill.
And then alternate three, shade structures, what exactly is that?
So it's just a, a, a structure that would go over to the team areas at baseball and softball, uh, just to provide some shade, and if it was raining.
For the teams or for the, uh?
For the teams.
For the dugout?
Kind of, uh, but it's, it's not dug out, it's not completely in its lows, it's just a.
But there'll be dugouts at the, here?
No. There'll be chain link fence, team areas separating them from the field and spectators. Um, the shade structures are much like the units over at Central for softball.
They range from ninety thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy thousand.
Yes.
And the, um, company, Argus, between all three alternates, came with nine million, eight hundred eighty-five thousand. Uh, Rad Sports came to ten million, seven point one. Um, and then, is it West Construction?
West Construction, yes.
Came to fourteen million, point two.
Yeah, very tiny.
And that's the bid we opened first, so you can imagine we're looking on our face when we open that bid.
And the, um, the cost that we're, the total cost of it again was what, ten?
Total appropriation?
Yeah.
Ten point five?
Ten point five. So this one's underneath. What about the bathroom, is that still out there?
So the bathroom, uh, we put out to bid, uh, and we were supposedly open those, um, and the site work was opened at two o'clock in April eighth, we were open the bathroom at two thirty, and we received no bids. So at this point, um, we've actually reached out to the low bidder, who was Argus Construction of Bedford, um, to see if they would be willing to handle the restroom concession building as part of a change order to their base bid specs. Um, and they are willing to do that. Uh, we did receive a number from them, that was just under five hundred and fifty thousand, which is fifty thousand dollars less than what we had originally budgeted, um, when we were doing our estimates for the project.
Did you go to Rad Sports, ask them?
No.
Does that seem like, like a good bid?
Uh, no, um, because, because of the base bid, uh, what was submitted on, Argus Construction is the lowest qualified bidder, um, no matter if we take alternate one, any combination of alternates, Argus is the lowest qualified bidder. Uh, we did reference checks on them, um, all of them came back glowing. Uh, they are actually learning for us at Mass Maritime right now. Um, they're doing a lot of the site work associated with the new WPC up in Boston. Um, so, you know, they, they've got the horsepower, uh, and they're qualified. Uh, their bread and butter is doing athletic fields. Mr. Bedrow and Mr. Cafferty met, um, with Argus and myself to kind of de-scope them, make sure they're aware of everything, make sure they're comfortable with their pricing. Um, the reason why, Tony, that we're not going back to R A D is because that would be a violation of, of bid laws.
Questions from the board?
So you're not recommending any of the other alternate?
At this point, no, because when we, when you add the roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the concession building to our nine point one seventy-five, we're upwards of nine and three quarter million dollars. Um, and to take those alternates now does not leave us with enough contingency to get through the project. So my recommendation to the town is, um, we spoke to Argus, asked him to hold this pricing, if he'd be willing to hold this pricing for the alternates, and we agreed. Um, so if we can get out there, start moving dirt, make sure that we're not running into ledge and other items like that, and kind of unforeseen stuff, um, then there is the potential that we can add that in and then later they can construct.
Should that be the alternates or the?
The, one of the alternates, yeah.
So, or, or some. Uh, can I just, a little follow?
Yeah.
So the underlayment, you have to do the underlayment to do the organic, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So that, it's not, you wanted to, have to go together?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's over a half million? Well, you can do one without two.
Right.
But, but if you want to get organic, you have to do a half million.
Okay. And the timeline on that is, is, is significantly into construction, that you would have to make that decision of what the material was going to be? Like, what point is it too late to choose that infill?
So basically, when, 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 when they're into construction, they'll submit shop drawings and semitals for, for all the different components that go to building the project site. Um, when they start to submit on the turf system itself, that's the timeline that will happen in this.
Within budgets.
On where we are.
Okay. Yeah, I, obviously, if, if there's room in the budget and, and you're comfortable with it as material, I, it's a number, I think, but, um, it's, I, it's not worth going over budget on.
Yeah, it, it, it would take us pretty close to our budget.
We've got some time.
Yeah, but we do have time, which is.
I see.
I say we use it.
Questions?
My only comment is that five hundred thousand dollars for the concession stand and bathroom is outrageous.
It is outrageous.
So I would say, we put that up to bid again, and we don't pay them five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a twenty by thirty shed, you know?
Well, the only, I think it would come back, um, very similarly, Tony, it's because it's a pre-engineered modular building, um, so it's coming on two tractor trailers, important order.
Why does it have to be that way?
Uh, that's the way, uh, when we submitted our proposal originally to do the work, we stated that the concession restroom building was going to be a pre-engineered structure, that it would be an alternate cost if the town wanted to hire an architect to design the building, um, and the town opted not to do that.
So what did you project that cost to be, for that component?
Six hundred thousand.
For the, for the, um.
For the, for the building.
Is that what?
Yeah.
What size building are we talking about? Are we talking a twenty by thirty?
Slightly bigger.
Six hundred, seven hundred square?
Yeah, it's like, uh.
Thousand?
I'd have to be back to it, I don't know. I, I know it's bigger than that.
What type of modular? Steel?
Uh, it, it's all. Gold.
Gold?
It's all, um, block construction, and then it will be sheathed with cedar shingles. So it will match to the extent we can to the adjacent buildings. You know, if, if the town would like, we can explore, you know, getting a local architect onboard to actually stick build it on site, uh, but there is a time component to that.
There's a time component to this too.
A big.
I don't want to delay. Uh, what do you think the difference is if we had an architect do it and somebody built it? Are we talking tens of thousands of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars, just in your experience?
I think we could be around the hundred thousand dollars savings.
I'm inclined to say, can we get somebody to, an architect to design it, um, and then build it? I'm not sure whether the architect could participate, but at least we get, even if we, it's above thirty, thirty thousand.
One time of a architect, Sean, that already be committed for next year.
I do know that, you know, the, um, the contractor that we hope to answer, and see the contractor, um, you know, has expressed to me that, you know, he does have a qualified contractor that he does a lot of work with, uh, that would be willing to work into the schedule. However, they can't do it on a design-build basis. We'd have to give him a design so we could properly place it, and then, and then we're building that.
Do we have to decide back and forth right now? Or can we just take the base bid?
We can take the base bid, but I think we need, if we want.
Yeah, we have to follow.
If we want to go with a modular building, that's something that we need to decide sooner rather than later, uh, because there is a six-month lead time.
And what's the benefit of a modular building?
Convenience, it just comes and gets brought down to site. And it's, and it's manufactured in controlled conditions, so you're getting a quality product that has a five-year warranty.
So we're talking about five hundred dollars a square foot? This building's four hundred dollars a square foot. And we're talking about cement block bathrooms and kitchens?
And it's all, I mean, it is finished stainless steel, countertops for department, uh.
So is.
There are bathrooms which are, which are expensive, tiny buildings are more expensive than larger buildings. And it's coming from across the country.
That's crazy.
So.
What do you think?
Tony, or Bill, what?
No, I think.
Seriously, can this be phased? I, I, I don't want to hold the project up either.
No, I mean, we, we, we can, we can withdraw, we don't have to move on the building right now. My suggestion is, we move forward, we enter into a contract with, with Argus Construction, and if we want to explore having a local architect do a quick design, we can get that price up too. Just something to be aware of, you know, the, the main goal is that we have the track and field component done for the Thanksgiving football game against Hangon this year. Um, if we delay too much, there's a good possibility, I, I would pretty much guarantee that the bathroom concession building is not, is that the end of the world? No, you know, we can still hold the game.
Still hold the game, get the bathrooms.
We'll have to get a temporary, you know, um, certificate of occupancy. And they could bring out order John for that one game, and then potentially the foundations are in, and maybe we'll stick building it over the way.
I don't think our goal would be to delay it, I just think this is just from it.
No, I, yeah, I understand.
We would act pretty quickly to see if they can go together.
I, I, I think, from my perspective, I, I would like to have the design and the stick build, because I think you get a lot more flexibility that you don't get with two pieces that get shipped on tractor trailers and then get put together.
Okay, is two weeks enough time for you, for you to do a little bit more exploration? Or do you stick build it, do you?
Uh, I mean, it would.
You should probably get an idea what an architect would cost us.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, it's like a long line.
Well, let's, let's approve the, this plan, so you can move forward.
Yes.
And then we'll just.
But not the bid alternate?
Not the building, and then we can talk about what the next steps are.
So that'd be great.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Motion?
Move forward a contract to Argus Construction Corporation for the Athletic Field Restoration Project up to nine point one seventy-five million, effective July first, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion by Mr. Miniani, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Curran, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much.
And we're, we're gonna hold off on the change orders.
Just one change.
Thank you.
Mark, how much of a contingency is in that number for them?
Zero.
There's none?
That's why we're.
All right, we're gonna move on to a seven fifty-five discussion vote. D C W, the Japanese director, and Sean, a downtown engineer, Mr. Sean, which is Kevin. Um, who will serve with the D C W event policy, Sean.
Yep, he's here. And I know that everybody's, yeah, for the event policy, we can have the.
For some reason, Kevin. So, um.
How are you?
Doing good, John.
Is it, is it the chairman? All right, so this is what you came up with before, right?
Yep.
This is about basically, when it's requiring, when D C W's being required to do things, charging certain rates, you might remember that?
Correct, charging a rate and the other change.
Great song, cool.
The other change of, uh.
So, any questions on the event policy, is that what we're? Any questions for the board on the event policy? We talked about this before. Any other questions, other motion?
If the board is selecting to approve the D C W details slash event policy, have it immediately.
So, motion by Mr. Camfield, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one is that you're looking for a piece of equipment that both water department utilizes to make repairs and improvements to the water system daily basis. You're looking, what is it, I guess, it also be utilized by the highway and other grounds. Uh, is this like a backhoe or excavator?
It's actually a small excavator that we'd be able to use in, in tight areas, if you're ready, and you can do it services. Sean was good enough to put some pictures together of it.
Wow.
It's a nice.
That's actual size.
We rented, we rented one for a while last year, um, it was a big help, and the guys were able to get a lot of leaks fixed. Not necessarily main leaks, but small leaks that go to different houses, the service rooms. Um, and they had great luck with that, and that's a lot more maneuverability. Sean came up and saw it on all the water breaks and put one together.
Yes.
That could be true.
Questions from the board?
Just one question, do, do we get like automobiles and things like that? Do we get special pricing with heavy equipment as well?
Yes. Um, I don't have it as a backup, but if you look in the backup, it's got a list price on it, and it also has that discount, which is significant, uh, because we're buying it off state business. Um, and it's very significant for the next piece also.
Any questions for the audience? Motion for the board?
More of the board selecting to award a contract to supply a two thousand and eighteen Caterpillar three hundred and five point five excavator trailer to Southworth Milken Caterpillar of Milford, Mass for six hundred and eight hundred dollars.
Motion by Mr. Camfield, seconded by. Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Now, this next one is a backhoe actually, that you're looking for, it's a twenty nineteen Caterpillar. Again, you're gonna be using it with both the Cituit Highway Department to make repairs against the drainage systems, daily activities. Uh, the cost of this is about a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, I think.
This was approved at town meeting, four hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Yes, so this price was like one ninety-eight, Sean, just in comparison to this machine.
Tony should be happy, it's not.
The other one was two hundred dollars under.
This one's, this one's.
That's the closest we've seen, Sean, two hundred below.
If the board selecting to award a contract to supply a two thousand and nineteen Caterpillar four forty backhoe loader from Southworth Milken Caterpillar of Milford, Mass for a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Motion by Mr. Miniani, seconded by.
Seven.
And is Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, now moving on to the next one, which happens to be the Engineering Water Study Contract. Um, that should be in our handout, if you haven't seen it already, so just wanna make sure we have it. This is the R F P that's going out, uh, to take a look at our, can you just explain it before? Obviously, time bothers, we have our water since last year, in the summer, and now, this was a water study that had been, that we requested, they suggested, and we approved at town meeting.
Correct, so we approved money, and it was also money from the Toll Brothers Project, for the water study, for a complete evaluation.
So what's the study gonna do, and you say, complete evaluation?
So, um, we put out an R F P for a complete review of the two thousand and one water distribution system. Complete, complete a study for future work, to continue making upgrades of the system. Um, do source analysis, taking into consideration town's water wells and the use of the water treatment plant. Um, study shall include a plan to look to future development in the town's water needs, including, but not limited to, twenty thirty, twenty forty, and twenty fifty. Um, and review the town's existing plant to help eliminate problem water. Um, it was actually a, a very large R F P, it was probably about twenty something pages long. We had input, we worked with the planning board, and we also worked with the water resources board. Um, we also had them involved in the writing, as well as the evaluating of the football system. Um, we had, we gave it to three. We had, we gave it to three engineering firms. Western Sampson was one of them. They did the last water study. We've been working with Time Bond recently in some of the water issues that we've had. And we also gave it to GZA because they did our Twins of reports. So we didn't, we want to start with a company that knew somewhat or had some background work in it essentially. We evaluated the proposals and the highest evaluation came out with Time Bond. They received additional points. I believe they received 74, where Western and Sampson came out with 63.5. And that's a tally over a couple of different topics and subjects in the rating of their proposals. Western Sampson's came in at 78,300, Time Bond's came in at 99.5. So we're making a suggestion to the board that we want the higher one because they were high rated and get the best, best bang for the buck of the study.
Questions for the board?
I just, just because you went over this quickly, I really want to reiterate for everybody that's listening that this has been a long conversation to get to this point, to actually issue a study, that it's going to address the system, the source, and the brown water, which are the three main... They're all very complicated things. And the input that it isn't just the people sitting here. There have been so many people have reviewed input, input to make sure that we ask the right questions when we go out with this. So I just want people to be really aware that, you know, how we got to this point. I agree that, you know, I know Tony doesn't want to go with the highest price, but I think that the analysis of, you know, getting the best product is thorough. And I think your recommendation is strong. So thank you for getting, doing all the hard work to bring to this point. We're looking forward to the answers.
And we all are. And, you know, we were working off the 2001 study before, but we hadn't completed the work that was suggested in 2001. So there were really, you know, we needed to get some of that done first before we did a new proposal.
So this will start after, once the study's complete?
Um, as soon as we award the contract, we'll get them started.
Well, done.
And that was my question. It's going to start after we award it, so right away. And one of my questions, but you did answer, you know, there's a lot of commentary in here from the planning board, so I just, you explained that... I wanted to make sure that it was acknowledged. So it sounds like they were very engaged from the beginning and also through the evaluation.
So I included, I included that in the package so that everybody could see. Steve Pritchard was the director of Mass Water Resources for a while. He's a great resource. And, you know, we really tapped into that resource on some of his expertise. He came up with his list of comments. He favored Time Bond for the total proposal. And what we would do is we would meet with Time Bond before we awarded them the contract officially, just to at least make sure that they were taking this part of this stuff into consideration.
My comment was, you know, both of these companies have worked so much in the town. I was really hoping to get an outsider to come in and kind of give us a fresh view as opposed to the people that had it planned before and planned before that. I don't know what, I mean, obviously, we put the bid out to everybody and we didn't get the third response, so we just got those two players. But I just see Western Sampson, Time Bond, and everything here. And I was hoping that we'd be able to get, like I said, kind of a new, new look at it to make sure we're not following one group's opinion as it goes.
I wish we'd talked about it beforehand. I could have opened it up to more. I was thinking we would get better results keeping it with groups that are working in town. It still had that competitive process with the three, the three engineering companies. And they didn't know if I gave it the seven, 10, or 12.
Yeah, I don't know. What are you guys' thoughts on that?
I was going to say the same thing. So you did not put it in the second register call?
No, not for an RFP. You're not required to by anyone's. It's an engineering contract.
But the advantage is they have all this history with the town. But to Tony's point, are we just getting kind of comfortable with those two?
How long has Time Bond been involved?
A bit more recent. The waters is from there more recent. They were here for the large brown water meeting. The only other really water project they did is they designed the water line on Blades Road and Bailey Squashway out to the end of Blades Road. That's the only real water project stuff.
And they did the trick plant.
They did work at the water treatment plant. And then they did a copper study also, too, very happy with it because of that also.
So they're doing the green filter?
And they're doing the green sand filter.
They did the water projections, the whole budgeting.
Yep.
So they've just been, they're in here a lot, which is couldn't bad, I just...
I saw, when I looked at Time Bond, because they've only been doing it, I guess they did the green sand filter in two years. I just, maybe because I thought that they've been doing such a great job last summer. And they seem to have a good push, but you can see what you're saying about are they too involved in it? At this juncture, I'd kind of say no, but for Western Sampson, I feel the opposite. I feel the way you feel, but they've been involved a lot for years.
Well, what do you guys think?
I think our cost would go up if you brought somebody new in, if you were willing to.
Why is that?
Because they're, now they have to start from square one. Right, look at all those previous reports that these two probably have already read once or twice, just to do what they've done. I see your, I see your fresh...
Maybe.
View.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But you guys are confident that Time Bond are going to come in here and not going to just recycle?
No.
Obviously, they're professionals, they're very good, highly, you know, highly respectable in the industry. But they're, they've also designed the green filter that we're having questions about. And they also designed the other stuff, so...
You risk the other problem, Tony, if you go with an unknown and you don't get a good report. You know, by what I mean a good report, that it's not as accurate or that it isn't as good, you know, you wasted your time. I mean, we've still, and to Western Sampson's credit, we've still been working off their 2001 report. We just haven't finished everything that they've suggested. And we're making the improvements now. It's just that the improvements weren't made prior to that.
Was there an estimate or they just, you gave them a blank sheet of paper?
We gave them a blank sheet of paper. And we added everything, everything that we had by the, by us, by planning and also by Water Resources Board.
What do you think?
I'm comfortable with Time Bond. I think they did an excellent job in very trying circumstances down at the water treatment plant. I don't think people understand how hairy that got a couple of times. So I think they did an excellent job. I think they'll do a good job on this. I understand the board's position. It will cost more. But if that's the way the board wants to do it in the future on engineering projects, we'll cast a wider net. But I think Time Bond, we've been very happy with the work they've done. Again, that water treatment plant project was, you know, really a nasty, nasty project. Didn't go exactly the way they had to go. And they really came through and did a good job on that because we found some stuff there that we weren't expecting. So, given that, given their familiarity with the system, I think they'll be able to do a really good job on this. But in the future, if we have these type of engineering projects, if it's the sense of the board, we'll cast a wider net for the engineers.
Yep. Gladly.
Any questions for the audience? Is there a motion or a further discussion?
Move the board to select and award a contract for a water study to Time Bond of Westwood, Massachusetts, for $99,500.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, so let's move on now to the topic of the night. Cedar Point Sewer Contract. So what I'd like to then, Kevin, is just, can you give us, or Will, whoever it is, just a brief summary of where we're at? Obviously, there's a contract and how we get to the contract. Take questions for the board, and then we'll open up to the audience, okay?
That'd be great. So, the proposed pressure sewer system is in accordance with CDM's recent INI study recommendations. And what I'm reading off is one of our engineers, Dan, who worked on the projects and speaking, and them all together. I'm going to make it as short as possible. It's a little long, but I'll get into it. And primarily achieved, the idea with the pressure system was it would be 100% INI removal for us, even with the rehabilitation less and at some point getting to 50% if we did a replacement. CDM's INI study indicated no one PVC can exhibit excessive INI. Therefore, we were in favor of the pressure alternative for this system. Cedar Point Gravity Sewer ranked consistently highest priority in most categories of INI reported. Moving forward, this work provided the biggest bang for the club to help free up capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. Special precautions have been taken to protect the pumps and all pertinences from the harsh conditions that are experienced out there. The proposed pressure system comprised of individual grinder pumps, reach home, small diameter sewer force mains, network using designed environmental one, E1 pumps in the priority package where everything's E1. We also included a five-year warranty with the E1 systems and with the heaviest duty model we could purchase. Each home would be provided with the force main connections, the E1, new sewer force main, service connections from the house to the pump, and exterior vents, interior and underground electrical and control panel upgrades. Exterior pump control panel is equipped for connection to a permanent mounted onsite generator. If there was power outage, all force main connections shall include two check valves furnished by E1 to prevent backflow. One is inside the pump enclosure and the second redundant check valve at the street line. All force main connections shall include two shut-off valves furnished by E1 again. Saddle connections to the mains, adapters, compression fittings are also provided by E1. The pump vents should be constructed of ducted line pipe and include a check valve provided by E1 to prevent floodwaters or damage as opposed to a plastic pipe that's typically on these. The packaged pump system would come complete with its own HDP enclosure and watertight cover. Due to the harsh conditions at Cedar Point, pumps would be located safely below ground with a reinforced concrete precast enclosure with a 30-inch parking manhole cover on top of that to protect the pump. Sewer force mains would be made of high-density pipe. HDP was selected over traditional PVC for improved watertightness because there's no joints, extreme strength, and resiliency. In talking to Dan, he made that claim because it's the only pipe that's approved in California even with the thread weights because the actual joints are stronger than the pipes themselves. Terminal cleanout access manhole provided on the force main in accordance with good sanitary engineering practices. And also, we have a system in there so that we can monitor flows and see how the flows are going for the system and see if there is a, is a problem. So that's where we went. We worked off that, designed a solution which would eliminate as much INI as possible. And that's how we came up with the pressure system. And the system that's designed is, it's the Cadillac of systems. I mean, Karen, you have a, your system's working fine, but this one has ducted line pipe for the vents. It's in a precast manhole enclosure, and it's really built heavily. No, we didn't, I'm sorry. So we went to that position. We had some meetings with the residents in the past. And there was questions on ownership of the pumps. And, you know, since then, we also had received a grant for $2 million, 2.2 million dollars from Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development in October.
John, can I just recap our meeting and maybe save some conversations? So on Saturday, John and myself, and Jim, and Kevin, and Patrick Herney, and a handful of residents, Dave Ball and some of the other members in the audience, were there and we met and talked about this for hours. And I'm going to try and summarize it to save some repetitive conversation later and also kind of show both sides of the argument. So the first thing, someone mentioned the INI in that area. That's the worst area in town for INI, which is where we process seawater or freshwater in our sewer treatment plant. They estimate about 10% or 40,000 gallons a day we process from seawater pumping do that instead of waste. The main issues with the group that was there were the pumps, right? So gravity, gravity system, you don't have pumps, so you lose power. You don't have problems with your sewer. This one is a pressure system, which is better because you know when leaks are because it's pressurized, but you need power. And you guys have storms down there, so sometimes you lose power. So the questions regarding the pumps were, A, how are you going to get power to us? And B, if there's a lot of rocks and stuff there, how are you going to access to give us power? So we talked about, John had an opinion that we should buy the pumps. The town would own the pumps, the town would replace the pumps, the town would get a truck to manage and power up those pumps. So try and deal with that. The other comment from the group was that maybe the problem is just some, a few of the laterals. There's 120 houses out there, and a number was thrown out as maybe the problem is just 10 laterals. And it's going to be a lot less money to repair than replacing the whole system. Personally, I don't, I think if it was just 10 laterals, we would have found it. But, but that is, that's what the problem was. Let's look at it a little bit more and see if it's not such a big problem and we can fix it through doing another test. I think there was a $20,000 test that we could do that may evaluate that. Couple of the other issues that came up where there's a grant, there's a $2 million grant that we have, that there is not high risk, but not low risk. There's some risk that we would lose that grant if we don't act on this project soon. And by doing this testing, and if we were to change to a gravity system, there's a possibility that we could lose that money. If we lose that, lost that money, then part or all of the project may turn into a better hit to the 120 homes out there. So that, it could be an additional cost to the homeowners out in that area, which discussed as well. So that's, those were the, there were a lot of conversations about other things, but those are the main salient points of what's going on here. The group would like us to do another test and see if there is a smaller problem than what we think there may be. The timing of that test is an issue with water tables and with, with summer, 4th of July. You don't want to start tearing up the streets in the middle of summer. And how much that would delay actually doing that project. And then we talked about whether, if that test came back and said that a gravity syst, no, excuse me, a low-pressure system was what was needed here, are we going to be able to move forward then? Are we going to start back at the beginning and have problems with this other stuff? So the board has to decide which system they like. The board has to decide if we do want to do the low-pressure, whether we do want to take ownership of the pumps. And then we've got legislative people working on seeing if we can postpone that grant so we don't lose the $2 million. And we've got Kevin working on how quickly we can get a study done to see if the problem is not as big as it possibly could be. The only other thing I'll mention is that that system is 50 years old. It is, you know, we relined it 20 years ago, the mains, but the system's 50 years old. And that's, that's what our problem in town is right now, right? We've got pipes that are 100 years old, or 50 years old, or 75 years old. And they're not supposed to be around that long. They're supposed to be replaced. So town administrator's opinion is if we're in there doing work while we're in there digging up the road, it makes sense to fix the whole thing, not just fix 120 laterals. Because more than likely, there's problems with the main also. And if not, there will be within the next decade and we'll have to do it again. So, did I do a good job, Dave?
You did. Let me each add one other thing for the options for the board.
Okay.
What has been scoped was a pressurized system. The other three options, as I understand them, we do nothing. Just leave it? Continue with the INI, and we go on and hope that we don't exceed our average daily capacity at the plant, which will kick off a whole series of other problems. The pressure system, you can replace the existing gravity sewer, which is a very deep, 17 to 18 feet in some areas, gravity sewer. That'd be a big project, really massive construction. Or you would do a, what I would say is a shallow gravity system. But that would require the construction of pumping stations. One somewhere in the neighborhood of the Sand Hills parking lot, the other in the neighborhood of the Lighthouse parking lot because they'd have to be pumped through the gravity woodwork. So those really are the options that the town has. Again, as Kevin said, 2016 study did say to put in a pressurized system. It was voted 2017, town made it. So the DPW went forward with that system, and that's why we're here today.
And the cost of a gravity you estimated would be maybe twice as much as...
Yeah.
As the pressure.
Questions from the board?
Actually, could we defer our questions to the, have some of the advocates' opinions as well?
If you want. I want everybody to ask questions.
I have a question before we get to that. Did Ty and I give you back the pros and cons of pressure versus gravity? You know, it just, there seems to be so much.
We actually used, we used, Kent Dresser McKee for the study.
Oh, sorry.
And then he used Weston and Sampson for the design.
Okay.
You know, we used, we did some internal engineering also with Dan Smith, he's got a lot of experience in this. He felt the pressurized system, you could potentially eliminate up to 100% of the INI. Where if you put in a new system, you would still experience leaking, there's an acceptable model you can receive either through PVC.
And how long would it take us to spend that $20,000 to ensure that?
Well, and let me just, let me just clarify too. They said, you know, you should, actually, the study said we should spend the next $240 or $280,000 to study every area, and they just broke it down into sub-areas. So they estimated $20,000, and I believe.
Just for Cedar Point?
Just for the Cedar Point. So that's just a number kind of pulled from random. I don't know if that number would hold up. It's not like they could say it's $20,000. I could go out and look, it could be $40,000, it could be, it could be more or less. They don't know what that value would be. It included flow isolation, smoke testing, and other methods of looking, doing more investigation down there.
Well, didn't the firm that you hired do all that already?
They did flow metering all through town. We did the whole town, we broke it up into sub-areas. We didn't get that detailed into every individual area. How long would it take to do a study? I'm not sure. I've reached out to a couple firms asking, and everybody's busy right now, but I'm hoping, you know, we could get something in two months, you know, two months, but I mean, it's gonna require up there physically doing smoke testing and other miscellaneous stuff that's probably not gonna be overnight, so. So it'd probably take like maybe a month or so for them to be able to do the testing and then come back.
If I may, by the time another test could be prepared and a firm selected to conduct it, we will have entered the dry season of the summer, making the results of that test perhaps less desirable.
So what's the optimum time of year?
Fall, spring, winter. Summer would be the worst season to conduct the study, and that puts us in a difficult timing situation.
Do we have any idea with respect to the grant, as far as the when it has to be used or?
The timing on the grant, I think we would be okay. The issue's gonna be on the amount of work on the grant. Yeah, the grant was for replacement of the sewer system at Cedar Point. I do not think the grant would hold for the repair of the system at Cedar Point. From a timeline, I believe we are okay. We actually have the 2021 to extend it, but if we change substantially the scope of the grant, that would become an issue.
Okay. So now you're looking at the timing, trying to find an optimum time, undertake the study if you decide to do so. And what if you decide to do so?
The only other thing I'd add is more than likely, the quote that we have will not be acceptable after 30 or 60 days, right there.
Right, we would have to reject the bid.
Go back to bid, yeah.
Go back to bid after the test was done. If we were going down the same road, and let's just say we did the test in October, November, we'd go back to bid in December or January for a spring construction. We're talking a year of inflation. If the economy stays good, it's gonna go up. If the economy crashes, sometimes you'll leave better bids, but we don't want that. But construction inflation, what are you saying, Sean, 5% roughly? It's all over the place, it's all over the place.
What exactly, what type of testing, what were you thinking about doing?
I believe it's camering a lot of the laterals. It's done smoke testing and.
The flow, right?
In-flow testing.
All right, we did the flows, so that test is.
We did them in the larger, the whole area, so we took the point, but not individual.
That's a waste of money, just, I don't think we should.
That's what the test is calling for, individual areas to try to isolate where the, where the service is at.
You've told us the problem is 40,000 gallons a day from Lighthouse Point all the way back to Rebecca. Doing individual laterals, it's cast iron pipe, in my opinion, is a complete waste of money. Did the company look at a gravity system, or were they just told to draw up an RFP for a pressurized system?
We did the RFP, we asked for a pressurized system.
And when was that? Because I forget, I, Jim had said it, and I was here.
I actually, I included, I don't know if you got it from backup, but I think they had the RFP. It was June 15, 2017, was the RFP.
So it was right after the town meeting where the funds were approved.
So what we asked for are, that was for the design. We went after the INI because we thought that was the most bang for the buck.
We've been chasing it for 20 years.
We have, and, you know, we've got a list, we've done a bunch of projects out there since 95, going back to an INI.
And as Tony has mentioned, you know, it doesn't seem like we're getting anywhere. So like, this lining of pipes, my opinion, I think it's just a waste of time.
In some locations there, you know, there could be, you know, a good application, but some there's not.
15, 17 feet, I was talking to a local contractor who has a lot of experience. He said that's how deep it is on the end of Pinot Gras neighborhood going out to Starkway Road. So I, you just have to convince me, and I disagree with you. I think a gravity system could be just as effective as a pump system. I told you guys that I, Karen's situation in mind, it might be a little bit different. It didn't have sewer before, in 1973, early 70s, I couldn't remember companies being around here doing the landy sewer lines, I remember their names. I don't know who was watching, I'm not saying anything was done. You know, I, technology has changed a lot 15 years. I just need to be convinced that this is the only alternative. And if, if it is some type of pump system, then maybe like Jim said, it'd be a hybrid system with a little bit of both. I just, at this time, I'm not convinced that, you know, and you like to build some, I don't think you really care one way or another, as long as it's getting done.
Well, we didn't decide to, just put this out just to get everybody all fired up. You know, that's, first of all, we went, we went by the study, Ian, one of our engineers who's got a lot of experience in this, spent a lot of time on this, putting everything together.
But there isn't anyone in this room that doesn't want the leaks fixed, they're all taxpayers, they want it all fixed.
Yeah, we all, we all.
And we don't want it, not us, but we don't want future boards and residents having to deal with it in 40 years. It wasn't done right the first time. And if it can't be, fine, I just, I don't know if I'm convinced, talking to the people that I, you know, do bump into, doing business, I'm not convinced it couldn't be, that's all. I would like to look at the study of doing something different, not fixing the laterals because it is cast iron pipe and it's gonna, it's gonna crack.
It's play.
All right, then that's even worse, okay? Well, how's it backed up? I mean, there's all kinds of questions, you know, none of us can really answer.
So what would it take? I mean, I don't know which one it is. I know one's more expensive, I know we have a grant that's exposed for some sort of loss potentially, you know. Are the residents willing to pay a betterment for, you know, for the other $2.5 million to replace the syst, with a $6 million system, instead of a $3 million system? Because the enterprise fund can't pay for it, it doesn't have the funding for it. And if we come back and they say, if we go to another expert and say, which system would you do, and they come back and say, you know, that the low-pressure one is better for that area, are we gonna do it? I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I understand the issue with the power. I would, I mean, I imagine mostly you have a generator anyways.
No.
So clearly no one has a generator. So I understand power being an issue, so I get it, you know. We can buy the pump, we can own the pump, we can have a stack of them over here so the brakes, we can throw a new one in, but in the middle of.
We just jumped in.
In the middle of a storm.
Karen's brakes, does she get access to that? Or somebody else?
No, not Karen.
All right. You know what I'm saying though?
Well, the reason I, the reason why I say.
Part of that, part of that.
The reason is this, is this is what I said on Saturday, that people who have gravity system right now are gonna be sacrificing to some degree by having a low-pressure system with a pump, and we're asking them to pay for it. I don't think that's fair because what we're trying to do is create more capacity for other people in other neighborhoods. So when you have gravity in one area, you've had it, if we're gonna have you going with low-pressure, then I think the town should own the pumps, and the town should own, it'd be whatever it takes to put your system into your sewage into the system, the pressurized system. There was some situation that somebody may have a low electrical panel, town should own that, or not own it, but upgrade it so that the person can actually put their sewage into the system. So that's why I see a distinction, no offense, Karen. Your neighborhood actually was an add-on, so it wanted to be part of the add-on, this was the system that is utilized. Of course, people who've had original gravity system, we're now trying to upgrade it to a pressurized system because we're trying to reduce the INI or augment our sewer system with other phases. To me, I see it as a distinction, that's all.
I bet it's a flawed system, it's a, it's a broken system. We have to fix it, just like we fix.
Right.
A building, just like we fix anything. So it's, you know, it would be, it would be a precedent for us to say we're gonna take, pay for the pumps, we've done anything like that before, and all of a sudden take ownership of that as part of the system. You know, no, no one else has ever done that before, and to Sean's point, we'll probably, next time we do it, we'll probably have to include that in any low-pressure system in the future. You know, I, I really don't care one way or the other what system's in there, as long as it works and it doesn't leak and we're not up against it at the sewer treatment point. You know, we know that area leaks, the worst in town, and we gotta get it fixed. You know, then you just come into the problem of how you're gonna pay for it.
So I had, let me see if I can summarize, this is very complicated, and I know that everybody's spent a lot of time on this, we all have. And, you know, obviously, this is not a, you know, something that we want to upset people with, but we all recognize, you know, speaking with some of the people in the neighborhood is that the INI situation has to be addressed, and I think we all agree on that. It's to the towns, in the towns' interest and everyone's, so that, that piece has to In my mind, it's a math here, is whether it's the laterals only, or whether it's the 50-year-old pipe with a 20-year-old liner, at some point, that's going to need work. And I look at this, that piece of this investment has, it's, we have an actual number, we know that it's estimated cost, or no, it's actually gonna cost $3.177 million to do a brand-new system at Cedar Point. Laterals, the main, the pumps, all of that. And we're told that that will solve 10% of our INI problems. We know that's the number, and we know that that would replace the whole system now. We have $2.5 million offered by the state to offset that cost, so the cost to our town is whatever the.
$2.2.
1-2. Those are, those are all known quantities in my mind, that will give us a whole new syst, we can, we can do a study and maybe, maybe it is two, three, four, five laterals. But I know today that we can spend a million and a half dollars and have a brand-new system that'll reduce INI by 40%, and we can get it done as soon as we can get the shovels in the ground and get it complete. I agree with the, I think you have special circumstances with the challenges of the point, and I agree that precedent-setting or not, the town should take ownership of the pumps, even though I own them, that's okay, that that makes sense to me. I also don't think that, you know, if there's another, a section of town, nobody has the challenges that you guys have. So to me, to carve out for this community, to take that responsibility, I'm completely on board, and I, and I don't think that we're that much at risk down the road, because we can make that argument very clearly. My concern with delaying and doing another study to, to say, okay, maybe we only fix a bunch of laterals, is we're just gonna have this conversation down the road and have to fix it. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert, listening for the last, I don't know, year and a half I've been on the board, to the experts has not convinced me that the gravity, that the pressurized system isn't the way to go. I don't want a conversation add-on on the Lighthouse Point just, just because I like Lighthouse Point, and I don't think we should take the parking lot away. So there's a lot of moving parts, and I, you know, I think that's just where I'm coming out on it, is we know it's a known cost and a known result to do the whole system all at once and do it in what we've been told is, is the right, right way to do it.
Any other comments, otherwise I'd like to.
No, we'll put it to them, I don't have anything different.
So if I could ask a favor of you, if whoever wants to speak, you're welcome to, if you could stand up and then just kind of projection that everybody can hear, and you can catch them on TV, that would be great, all right? Dave?
Thank you, John. You saved me a little bit of trouble, but similar, some of the discussion you just had, I was gonna mention in a written statement that I had. So I'm gonna summarize a little bit of that, but I'm gonna say it a couple of times. Remember, Representative Kiernan, a few of the board's board, 7 o'clock in the morning, and stated to you that he was asking this board to postpone the contract and do the study. He's a state representative. We had last Saturday at the meeting that Tony talked about, Michael Murphy, I don't know if he is here tonight or not, but he is the state, the state senator's legislative aide, and he was aware of the same kinds of issues, and seemed to support the position that the Cedar Point Association had. There were two meetings held in this building, in this room, one last May, May 1, and a second one on December 11, by the way. And the association members were here. I'm gonna ask everybody that's part of the Cedar Point Association originally, and I don't even know who you are. Okay, there you go. I, I kind of sense that every single person put their hand up, is gonna tell you, or if they could tonight, the same thing I'm gonna say, you need to postpone the study, oh, excuse me, you need to postpone a watering the grant tonight and do the study. But anyway, so there were two meetings held, and both of those meetings, the, the result was the same, everybody said they did not want it all to a grinder pump system. We asked at that meeting to get the leak data that the town had for our power of the sewer system. We received that promptly about two weeks later. We didn't get the, and I'm not, I'm not throwing bars either, we didn't get the video until March 5. And that's because the DPW was busy with other projects, we understand that, but the fact of the matter is, we didn't get that data until March 5. We scrambled over the next week and a half to put together a seven-page report outlining all our concerns and the reasons why we were not accepting of a grinder pump pressurized system. There's 120 houses out there. The sewer system's been in place since around 1972. It's worked flawlessly, there's only been a couple of issues, and that was, in my mind anyway, the result of the installation of a water system that was installed out there three, four years ago. Everybody focuses on winter storms and the problems they can cause, and there's an awful lot of problems that they cause, and that they will cause with a, with a pressure-type system. But there's summer storms that occur as well. Sean's lived here all his life, so he certainly remembers Hurricane Glory, 1985, Hurricane Bod, 1991, and how it happened with Son Irene in 2011. Power was out in town, and places for over a week. Power out, down by Estes, outflow, just above a week. That means that if you have this kind of sewer system, you can't flush the toilets. you can't wash your clothes, you can't wash dishes, and you can't take showers. I don't think I'd want to be messing around with people that haven't had a shower in a week quite long ago. So, there's so many reasons why we're simply asking for two things, again, do not award that contract tonight, do the study, we're convinced that, and we understand what the sewer department's saying, you can't probably do a full study in a, in a short period of time, you're not going to have the kind of rainstorm they like to investigate, but there's high tides running at the end of June, July, and August. If you send your cameras down through them, you see laterals spewing out water, that's pretty good clue that those are laterals that have a problem. So then you start to think, okay, we fixed it. So, Michelle, I'd like you to maybe do your thing next. Nancy Adams is living somewhere up in the back of the room, she's one of our attorneys that lives out there, she may want to have something to say. Then I'm going to ask two plumbers to speak. One of my grandsons, Cory Conrad, and Tom Galligan, they're both plumbers that live out on Cedar Point. So, anyway, that's what I have to say. Michelle?
Michelle Loring, 67, Rebecca Road. The only, what reason I got this great honor is because I've learned so much about sewers in the last six or seven months, it's totally amazing. One thing, though, that was said that I just want to clear up a little bit quickly, is that the Department of Public Works, they asked Weston and Sampson to give them various prices, estimates, for different types of sewers that could be used out there. One of them was a total replacement of the gravity sewer, and according to Weston and Sampson's report, it would be a total of $4.4 million. So we're talking about one and a half million more than these pumps to totally replace the system with a rear-end sewer. In any event, everyone wants to solve the, the problem with the infiltration into the system. The Cedar Point gravity sewer may be very old, but about 20 years ago, it was given a cure-to-place grinder plumbing. And this line is good for 50 years, that's what it's supposed to be good for. And what it does is it lines the whole entire pipe to such an extent, it's as if you put a PVC pipe down the middle of the sewer. And this is supposed to be good for another 30 years at this point, it was put in around 2000. The main was checked completely eight years ago. The town paid for this, they checked the whole main, nothing wrong with the main eight years ago. What was the problem, the laterals, the laterals from certain houses, especially down towards the neck of the point, were leaking. The Department of Public Works has recommended to you a total replacement of this system with pumps. They are implying that some engineering firm has recommended this system, and they have. They want to point to the CDM Smith report, Camp Dresser-McGee report, for 2016. What did Camp Dresser-McGee do? They asked them to say, where's the problem in the whole town with infiltration and infle? And so Camp Dresser-McGee did that, and they said, here's your problem, and the worst problem's the point by the way. We're 4-2 in this study. What did they recommend, Camp Dresser-McGee? Camp Dresser-McGee recommended, in big letters in their report, it's under recommendations, and it goes on for three pages, talking about different types of tests that they recommend should be done to the sewer. They wanted, it has to be cleaned out entirely, it has to be videoed with a camera, it has to have this test, smoke testing, check the, the manhole covers, this is their recommendations. So where does the Department of Public Works get this, gee, Camp Dresser-McGee recommended pumps? And I'll show you where they recommended pumps. What they are calling a recommendation is that towards the end of this report, Camp Dresser-McGee gives the different areas, and they'd say how much it will cost to test it, then they say, if low-cost estimate to repair this is this, and a high-cost estimate to repair it is that. They didn't recommend either one. And when they did this for Lighthouse Point, the investigations would cost $20,000, the low construction cost, which would be to repair certain parts of the sewer and the laterals, was $700,000, and the high cost was $1,007,000. And on the $1,007,000, there's a footnote, footnote 7. And footnote 7 says, this high cost is based on if you replace it, if you replace it with low-pressure grinder pumps. This is the only place, this report is 64 pages long, 64 pages, and I've looked at it, and the only place that they mentioned the words "low-pressure grinder pumps" is in footnote 7 of that one page, right there, that's it. Now, the, this is not a recommendation, this is an explanation of a cost figure put in there. They wanted the test to be done, they wanted an examination of the sewer, a video to see where the problem is. This is like, if you go in, you're not going to have your lung taken out if you don't get an X-ray. They want to see what the problem is, do you have to take a little bit out, do you have to take a big part out, you take the whole thing out, but you don't just say, oh, you've got a lung problem, let's take the lung out. You do an examination to see where the problem is. We're here because of a footnote. Due diligence is that level of judgment, care, prudence, determination, activity that a person would reasonably be expected to do under particular circumstances. And it's not due diligence to say, spend $2.5 million of taxpayer money on a footnote. The Conwell's Department of Environmental Protection, which I'm sure you all wear, is the one that's in charge of sewer discharges and plants, things like this, they say the way to do it, the next step, is to do a study, so you know what you're dealing with. The sewer main is in good shape, and it should be for another 30 years, there's not anything anywhere that people say otherwise. You can't point to any study that says the sewer is not in good shape. Fixing the laterals could be done a lot faster than putting in this new pump system, and according to the Engineering Department of Environmental Protection, to install a pump system, you have to dig to the laterals anyway. Why don't you just fix them, he said. Why are you putting in a pump system? Now, last year, after our opposition to the pumps, the department went back to Weston and Sampson, and they went back not for a recommendation as to what kind of system to put in, but to find out what the cost of some of these other things are. And one of the things that they asked for was the cost that if the town takes over the, the cost of these pumps, how much is it going to cost the town to pay for maintenance and repair problems with a pump? Can the gravity sewer be fixed? Sure it can. How long's it going to last? We don't know, anything can happen. But with the pressure pumps, we know how much these pumps are going to cost. We know, because the manufacturer tells us that they last for 15 to 10 years, that's it. We know they have problems after 10 years. And according to Weston and Sampson, what the town asked, these pumps in the first 20 years will cost the town $540,000. In the first 20 years, $540,000 to maintain and replace these pumps. So they're not going to last. So you say, our sewer, how long's it going to last? We don't know, it's supposed to be good for another 30 years, but we know the pumps aren't going to last. Now, individual house pumps, these pumps are so complicated that the bid that was put out took 11 single-spaced pages to describe these pumps. I read that too. They have things in them like check valves, anti-siphon valves, discs, rotors, shredding rings, appellers, control and alarm counts. 11 pages, single-spaced, at least, they need electricity to work. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse, Cedar Point's not the ideal location for a piece of equipment like this. Basically, if there was put in, to save the Mass Works grant, a change of scope for this project, to instead of putting in the pumps, correct the problem, same location, same problem, but do it in a different way, the scope of work could be changed, and the grant could be used to work.
Most of you know me, my name's Cory Conrad, I live at 44 Rebecca Road. I've been a resident of Cedar Point for 29 years, my entire life. I hold a plumbing license in the state of Massachusetts, and I work for McDougal Plumbing and Mechanical out of Milton, former employee of Tom Galligan, back corner. In 2015, we experienced a powerful coastal storm, in which many residents lost power for upwards of five days. In such an event, which is frequent, most residents have been instructed to run water at sinks to prevent freezing pipes. In the scenario, holding tanks would become full, overflow, or back up into the residence, depending on the elevation of the lowest fixture, or the chamber vent of that actual holding tank. Whatever comes first is where the water's going to go, it's going to seek its own level. And it'll happen in a short timeframe. You get 1.2 gallons a minute out of the low-flow faucet. So just imagine 100-gallon tank per 1.2 gallons a minute going into that tank, you have less than two hours before it fills up. To be honest, from a plumbing standpoint, to add 120 potential mechanical failures in the ground where salt water is, seems insane to me. That's all.
Thank you. Thomas Galligan, 35, Lighthouse Road. Once you have an E1 pump in the ground, you can't go anywhere else, you're at their mercy. They have to use up the service, there's no other pump that replaces their pump, it's nine feet in the ground, you can't alternate to a different pump company. So if something happens to that company, you're done for. If a company goes out of business, or gets sold, or moves overseas, there's nobody that's going to help you, there's no other pump that would fit in that chamber. That's all.
Nancy Adams, 41 Lighthouse Road. I was at the meeting on Saturday, and I won't reiterate what everyone else has said before you, but this group of people have come together on several occasions, and spent a lot of hours in front of a lot of different members of the town, and in front of Kevin Cafferty and the town administrator. And we're not here to be great problems for the town. The issue from our perspective, which Michelle Loring laid out to you quite clearly, is that we need more information. No actual recommendation has been made. At the start of this meeting, our representative, newly-elected, came, we also, on behalf of him, and on behalf of the state senator, have asked this board to defer awarding the contract tonight, let us do additional study. One of the concerns we had at Saturday's meeting was, what about the grant? We now know we have until 2021. So that gives us the opportunity to do the study, to find out what the problem is. Maybe at the end of the day, this is the way to go, but perhaps it's not, there's other ways and other methods that we can use that wouldn't create such a sacrifice to the people employed. So I would respectfully ask that you defer, do some studies, so that we can obtain the information we need, do the due diligence that we need to do, so everyone can make an informed decision, and the people of the point can help the town, perspective this problem we have. Thank you.
Somebody over here have their hand up.
Phoebe Lusto, 21, Rebecca Road. I just wanted to reiterate, when I hear the cost comparisons, you're excluding the cost of maintenance, which is why probably, maybe it was originally voted, because it seemed like a cheaper alternative, but the cost of maintenance now gets pushed out onto the, onto the customer, onto all of us. So when you hear it's twice as much, I think that those additional costs are not being taken into consideration, kind of close the gap a little bit.
Anyone? All right. How's the board feel? What would the board like to do?
Well, I'd like to actually hear some remarks with regards to some of the comments were made, I think of Mrs. Loring's comments, who are very enlightening, to that this system was actually never even recommended. So that's, that's concerning to me. Is that a true statement, Kevin? Because I just want to understand, you know, people pick sometimes what they see in different documents, and I, you know, we're at the liberty of engineers, and so if an engineer hasn't come and said, this is the way you need to go, then yeah, I'm all for doing that lateral study, because, first of all, if we have till 2021 to work on this, that's great, but I would also like to say, just with Representative Carney standing before you, saying that he can change is not a fact. We don't have a letter in hand from Senator O'Connor, we don't have a letter in hand from the Governor Baker, we don't even have a letter in hand from Representative Carney's office either. So I just want to make that clear, right? That's a goal, it's not, it's not a given, so we have to work through that too. But I want to understand what's been recommended to us from engineers.
There is a recommendation in that section where it says, the source of INI for the increased value would be with a pressurized pump system. We met internally after that meeting, after reviewing this, and came up with a conclusion also, the pump system would eliminate 100% of the INI in the best, it would be the best at that time.
But just from a cost perspective, right?
We weren't just looking at a cost perspective. One of the thoughts we were thinking, you've got a deep sewer, no matter what you have for a deep sewer, there's an acceptable amount of INI that's in there, you're, you're never eliminating that INI, it's going to get worse over the years. And that was one of the ways we looked at it. You know, and it says, in the report also, there's another section that says, previously repaired sewers such as Subarea 42 still exhibit excessive INI, previously completed rehabilitation work may not have been as effective as planned. You know, we looked, we looked at everything, but, you know, that's, that's where we were with it. Amanda, please speak up.
Edit to that, this project was approached as a replacement project, not as a repair project, and when we replace systems, we look at using today's technology and methods, what are the best systems available for that replacement? And just going off of the Phase 3 sewer expansion where Sutton, Kenfield resides, that area was designed to be a forced pressure system, it was our most recent sewer expansion, and it was the best technology available at the time, and remains to be. As far as INI removal, forced pressure systems are the best at removing INI from sewer systems, and that gave it a high ranking in our meeting, our goals for this project.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I mean, we want the best system, we meaning everyone in this room, Kevin, us, if a gravity system is the best system in the room, and if we only have to fix 10 laterals, then that's what we want. Like, that's easy, it's going to cost...
I'd love that.
It'd cost one-tenth of the price, and it would be an easier fix, and so I, I think we're all on the same page. We're going by the, the expertise that we get from our people that tell us what to do. Kevin's even mentioned that he talks to these engineers all the time, and he picks their brain with our projects, with everything, and, and all of them, or others of them, have said that this is the right way to do it in that area. But I understand that's not in, on paper, and I, I don't have a problem doing another test to do it, but we just have to understand what the risks of doing that test are. The risks are, we've got to be able to change the scope of the, of the grant, and hope that that's accepted, that's probably not high risk, probably low to medium risk, I would guess, and then we have to accept the risk of, that the cost of a project may be more. I don't know, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but Mrs. Loring, you know, said it could be $4 million, we've heard other people say it could be $7, $8 million, I, I don't know. But certainly, you know, that's another exposure that we have now. We know what this one's going to be, and we know that we have a grant that can be applied to. I mean, just from my personal perspective, I would probably rather not have pumps out there, right? If the outcome is that the low-pressure system is the right one to go out there by other experts, that we're not starting back at square one again and not getting this project done. Because every week that we don't get this project done, you know, Will's at the brink on this, at the sewer treatment plant, and we've got to get that INI down. And this is the biggest of the holes in the dam right now. So that's my opinion.
Could I just clarify, just two brief things? The 4.4 million to replace the whole system with a new gravity feed system is a report that was given to me by the Department of Public Works that they were given by Weston and Sampson.
And the date, what's the date of this story?
And the date on it is May 16, 2018.
So I don't know what it is. My point is, I don't know if it's four. I've got other people telling me it's going to be closer to seven. I don't know.
Kevin, wasn't the estimate for the pressure system 2.2 in that report?
Correct.
And it came in 3.2.
So without the maintenance.
But I'm just saying, their estimate was $1 million less for the system we just bid. So that 4.4 is probably low, but we can take it at 4.4.
I'm just trying to explain where I got this from. And to ask you where the recommendation was for pumps, I was with Will Branton in his office on Monday morning, yesterday morning. And I said to Mr. Branton, I said, "Where's the recommendation for the pumps? Where do they mention some of these pumps anywhere for the point?" He says, "Yeah, footnote." I said, "Oh." I says, "There's nothing else that you have, that you have, that you haven't given me?" He said, "No, not a recommendation. It's the footnote." So that's why I represented those two things to you.
No, I didn't question your comments. I'm just saying, those are the variables. That's just what we have to deal with.
And if I could just address that for one second. We probably have at least, you know, 400, 500 pumps around town, you know. Karen has them, you know, and they're working and they're working in different areas. I understand the plumbers, you know, they get the worst-case scenarios. They don't get the scenario, "Hey, this has been running for 25 years and I didn't know I had it." You know, they get the bells when there's a disaster. And we were, you know, we were looking internally for figuring out a way that we could remove 100% of the INI. And that came up, I believe, in November. We had a meeting with the selectmen and did one of our sewer upgrades. We're getting up there because it was creeping. How do we get the most bang for our pocket in elimination? And it's stuff that we spoke about internally. We took this report and we added on to it, looked for the best way that we could eliminate as much INI as we could.
Yeah. It seems to me that if you do the study and the study shows that the whole system is terrible and not just the number of lateral leaks, then you don't have to make a decision. Then you go back to the pumps. This is, nothing's written in stone here. We're not asking that a whole new gravity system be put in. We're simply asking, and the town wants and we want, the influx to stop. And we're all fathers, we're all citizens of this town. We're not asking you to put in a four, or five, or whatever, cost a million, new million-dollar gravity system. We're just asking, find out where the leaks are. If it's practical to fix the leaks, fix them. You can fix them faster. If it's not practical, then we're stuck with the pumps, I suppose. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Ian Malzick, 35 Becca Road. One of the concerns I have is if a house is going to have a handcane pipe outside, when the check valve had to talk, do you really think it's going to come in there? They're going to be broken on at ground level when the boulders and the waves come through that move decks and houses. That pipe is not going to be able to stand up to that kind of thing. Water's going down in that system. What happens to the pump then? I understood that salt water infiltration development voids the warranty. Is that true? Another concern.
Question over here. The only thing is, I know the town is concerned about infiltration. I'm sorry, David Lusto, 12 Becca Road. But our concern is having a system that works when the power goes down as well. Right? I mean, the sewer system is there to serve our sewer needs, not just keep the infiltration out, right? So if we have a system that has some infiltration, but it works during a power outage, that's hugely important to us. Somebody have their hand over here?
One more follow-up question?
Yes.
Just, I just want to, well, this is probably for you or Kevin or anybody. Doing the study, and something which I forgot to mention, is it possible to get meaningful data at high tide? Or are we really talking about a year out if we not go forward with the study? Is there any way to type in that time and have to give meaningful data?
We could get some meaningful data from high-tide cycles. There are even some sections of pipe that stay submerged even at low-tide cycles. So we're talking about severe tidal influence on the sewer lines.
I think that would be really important to that first study. And the question for Jim is, and it's really not, this is one of the challenges of, obviously it's very important to your community, but every decision we make affects other things in the community. So my question to Jim is, postponing the INI reduction, does that in any way impact the development in Green Bush?
If this pushed it back so that we could not meet the requirement of the grant and we had to give the money back, then you would be applying for a North situat, theoretically, a North situat Mass Works grant and this Mass Works grant at the same time. Chances are you would not get both.
Great. But I'm more concerned about letting up again. I mean, we have the capacity for them, but they get delayed if we haven't addressed a significant portion of the INI. Is that into the equation at all?
Want that part of you again?
I think she's worried about the plant, the Drew project.
If the Drew project goes, they're going forward, they start construction, and we start reaching maximum capacity at the sewer plant because we haven't addressed it.
They would have to do one of two things. They would either have to do other INI, or as long as we knew that this project was going to happen and we move a set amount of INI, then we'd be okay. We just have to know that we're going to create that capacity. The grant is for the replacement of the sewer system on Cedar Point. I'm not sure how much the state's going to quibble if I tell them I'm going from a pressure system to a gravity system, as long as I'm replacing the system. If I'm not replacing that system, the grant will be at risk.
Yeah, sure.
Okay? So I'm not an engineer. I watch impossible engineering a lot on TV, that's why I get on my cell phone. But I've heard Sean and I've heard Tony since I've been here saying, "We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably Kevin, millions of dollars, on INI fixes in our sewer system." And our INI is still through the roof. They haven't worked. So it's my belief, whether you do a gravity system, a pump system, some new system that makes it disappear, I don't know, but we need to replace the system at Cedar Point. It's 50 years old, those laterals are old. It's just an old system. Should be replaced with a new system. A gravity system will take INI out. It will leak more than a pressure system. It's just, okay? I mean, I've talked to the engineers, that's what they told me. And a gravity system will leak more over time. But it will, we'll get your INI out. You'll get some. You won't get the same run. You won't get the same bang for the buck. So however we go forward, it's still going to be my recommendation that the Cedar Point sewer system be replaced with a new sewer system because that's our biggest problem. And I don't think repairing it is going to get the type of INI numbers out that we're looking for. So again, gravity pressure, that's going to be up to the board, but I still think you need to replace that system because that's our worst. I threw you under the bus, sorry. We've done INI repairs, the town's done INI repair for years and years and years and our INI numbers are still through the roof. It's getting to the point where we need to replace these, not just keep trying to fix little pieces and see if we can get it.
So that was kind of my last comment along those lines. So if this test does identify leaks in the laterals and I'm not contracting that maybe someone in the back corner can answer the phone. So if you're repairing a lateral into a clay pipe, how effective is that going to be? You know, we saw the MBTA coming to town. Almost every crossing, there were leaks in our water pipes down the road, either way. Either damn road, Green Bush, all over town. After they laid the track, trains started running, we had water leaks. So I'm just wondering if this might be kind of similar to that. How effective would it be to make a water tight connection from a lateral to a old clay pipe? You know, Leo or Tony can answer that. I don't know. And that's kind of along with what Jim has said.
As I understand, 35 White House Road, I understand that that means has a fiberglass liner, which is probably a half an inch thick. So theoretically, you'd be making a connection between the clay and the fiberglass. And there again, because I was studying, you've been sitting here all night and saying, sort of this or that or this. It's just a study. Maybe they're fine, maybe it's some other, maybe it's one pipe that's broken.
That's a lot of water to have.
Without a careful inspection, I think would be a good question.
So let's draw this to a conclusion then. We can either proceed forward with the contract as is. You can opt to do a study. If you're going to opt to do a study, we've got to do it at the optimum time. We got to. If the study comes back, I think the way I look at it is, you do the study, you look at the laterals. I would expect and I'd want recommendations and at least the options. What is the best option for Cedar Point? Albeit a gravity system or a low-pressure system? I also want to know what the useful life is, you know, with respect to both these systems, with respect to INI. So, you know, if you're going to put a gravity out there in the first five, 10 years, the lengths are there, what are the experts telling us with respect to the long term for the use of the life of 50 years? Saving INI for 10 years is not going to be the best for people who, you know, for the remaining 40 years when you're trying to eradicate it. I'd like to know the cost for both. And then the rationale for replacing the main or the lateral. So, oh yeah, I like the rationale. If you're going to replace the laterals, why not replace the main or not? I mean, I think at least if you're going to ask for a study, that should detail it. Things come back and it still says low-pressure system, I would assume probably 2/3 of the people in here would probably say, "I'll go with it." The other 3rd might not, but that's okay. If it comes back and it says gravity, then you can, the board can decide whether you want to do a gravity system, see what the cost is, go from there and see whether or not the grant for the 2.2 is still available for either of the two systems. If the cost to do a gravity is much more expensive than 4.1, maybe in the run of 6 million, I would expect the board would have a discussion about who should be paying for that. If it's going to be, you know, the rate payers or whether it actually should be to go to that system as opposed to a cheaper system to the residents. Personally, I'd say we go to the residents. Tony mentioned about a betterment. If you wanted a more expensive system, then that's what you're going to have to pay for. If you have a cheaper system, for the rest of the rate payers. But I think those are the pros and cons. The study should at least value, that's what the board would like to do.
And the board should be aware, the longer this goes out...
More expensive.
The more expensive it's going to be. You know, we stand with the grant. I mean, we hold the grant for a while, but it's going to get more expensive.
Understood, but I think we need to do the due diligence. It just doesn't sound like we've exhausted everything, unfortunately. I understand that the replacement pressure from your words is the best technology that we have right now, but if that's not what we really need to fix Cedar Point, I want to have a more definitive answer with regards to that. So I'm inclined to favor not approving this this evening and doing the study for the laterals, which is not what I initially came in here thinking after reading all the letters and other things. So, but that's where I stand right now. And I also, you know, I'll work with you, Jim, or whoever, Brad, and I'm sure the rest of the board will too, to work with our representatives to see what options are with that grant.
Well, again, I can, again, say with very good certainty, the scope of the grant is a replacement. If we are doing a replacement, I believe that we can deal with it. If you're doing less than a replacement, I think you are then getting...
Well, what's the definition of replacement? The entire system?
Entire system. That is what the grant was for.
Well, then, that's...
So once you start coming down from that, the more you come down, the greater risk it's going to make.
Yeah.
And I understand the board's position. I think the DPW has done a very good job on this. I think Dan, our engineer, this is what he did in the private sector before he did sewer and water work. He put his heart and soul into this. The engineer, on more than one occasion, said, "You don't need that, Dan. You don't need that. You don't need that type of pipe. You don't need that much we've done in the city." And Dan kept saying, "No, we're going to put it in. We know the dangers out there. We know the issues out there." That's one of the reasons that the spec for the pump was 11 pages long, because Dan kept adding things in and saying, "No, we're going to have it done and see if it can back up. It's going to be stronger, the best, the biggest, because we have to make sure that this works." So, you know, I think the DPW did its due diligence. I think the contract that we have is a good contract with a good price. I am concerned that in the future, this could cost us significantly more money. So we just want to make sure that the board understands that.
Is that a motion? For?
Kevin, before we close, I know everybody wants to go home because it's 1,000 degrees in here. Are you on or aware of, do you understand well, Kevin, Sean, exactly what study it is we are going to be doing? Because I don't want to do a study and be told it's the wrong thing.
So let me, I can...
Sorry to delay this, but I want to make sure we're on the same page that we're doing.
No, let me bring it up. What we would do is, we would carry on, we'd put together an RFP from the Cedar Point recommendations for smoke testing, for isolated flow testing, as well as cambering, to figure out the sources of INI, where it's coming from, and also do an evaluation of the best system to eliminate that. Either with a gravity system, a pump system, do nothing, or do a combined lower-gravity system with two pump stations, one in the White House and one in Santos.
I don't think anyone wants that.
I don't think anyone wants that. That's not even a bother. That's not even an option.
I just want to cover every option.
So the one thing that I'd add, I think John was saying, is I think what we have to do is get the price of a gravity system also.
And it also asks for...
Even if they say this one's minutely better, I think we need the price of both and then we can bring it out to the public and say, "It's an extra $500,000, it's an extra $10 million, what do we want to do?"
Weston and Sampson have come up with that price. What they did is they took unit prices for similar jobs for a deep sewer pipe. I was, I had told Jim, I think it'd be more expensive because we have water on each side. If they were looking at a deep sewer pipe in Saugus and it's $100 a foot and that's what they carried at Cedar Point, I think there's a big difference there because it's tighter roadway and...
Now, I don't really care what the number is. I just think we've got to bring it out to the public. They would, I mean, I think we all agree, you'd rather have a gravity one than a power one, if you had your choice.
Right.
And they may have the choice and they may choose to pay to put in the gravity.
So what we'll do is we'll have cost estimates associated with that also. And I'd also like them to present to the board the findings.
Kevin, in terms of timeline, are we going to specify the timeline or are we going to choose an engineer, kind of talk to the engineer, flesh that out?
I'm going to look for a little help with that from the engineer. I don't want to, you know, commit to something in the summer months and have them make the strong suggestion that we're not going to get the best results if we have to wait till fall. We'd wait till fall and we'd lost the construction season at that point anyways. You know, we'd have to hit it hard in the spring, in the spring or summer next year.
So one, Dave, I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. That's your understanding of the study we're going to do. I don't want to do the study and come back and say, "We did the wrong study." So the study, as Kevin outlined, is what the Cedar Point Association or the residents are. That's what you're looking for.
In my opinion, that's what we're looking for. Michelle, do you agree with that?
It's the study that was recommended by Camp Dresser McGee in that report of October, I think it was, of 27...
So one, Dave, I wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page. That's your understanding of the study we're gonna do. I don't wanna do the study and come back and say, we did the wrong study. So the study, as Kevin outlined, is what the Cedar Point Association or the residents are. That's what you're looking for.
In my opinion, that's what we're looking for. Sheldon, you agree with that?
It's the study that was recommended by Camp...
Kevin just went over it, right.
By Camp Dresser McGee. And that report of October, I think it was, of 27th...
But that's what Kevin just went over.
That is right.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, because I don't wanna be back here and have a different...
All right, so we're gonna have, forget... All right, so if the study is a replacement, it's either gonna be a gravity or individual pumps? It's not gonna be a hybrid?
Well, it's one or the other, but the shallow... The shallow gravity system would need pump station.
That's right, that's right. So is this board instructing Kevin to have a study to have one or the other?
Well, I believe this board just said, they don't want pumping stations out at Cedar Point.
I know.
So...
Rather than have a pump at every house, I mean...
You still have to have it at every house, right?
Well, if you have a pressure system, is what we just talked about. That is a grinder pump at every house. The system that's out there now, there's no pumps out there, it's a deep well.
The question Sean has is if you have the two pumping stations, you still need a pump at every house?
No.
Remember the gravity?
Gravity's all that there is, there's pump set.
Okay.
So it runs downhill...
If there's a hybrid system, if it's out there, Tommy had mentioned it a while, but this is...
I mean, I'm gonna do this...
We can include it in our study.
Kinda runs downhill, the pumping station, the pumping station pumps it up, and then it runs downhill from there to another, then it gets pumped again, and it goes.
Squashit Pond and Peggy Beach Road, that's the same kind of small pumping stations.
So everything runs down there, then it gets pumped up and back out.
Cory.
Just a quick comment on the whole pump station thing. What would be the difference of having a pump station at Sand Hills Park and Lot compared to Peggy Beach Park and Lot or Egypt Beach Park and Lot?
Because you're gonna have one right in front of the lighthouse. As well as...
It's available by the wall.
Mine's ahead of you too, one at the end, one at the...
But I'm just saying, we already have pump stations at Beach Park and Lots.
But it's the lighthouse.
Yeah.
I can tell you right now, as much as all of you would say, that's okay. You pool, pool, or hole. Everybody else in town, and I'm gonna tell you right now, if you put that to a vote, they would shoot that down pretty quickly. They're not gonna want a pumping station.
But they're not affected by it.
Well, we'll look for it with a lot.
That even, that's...
Is that 600 grand, by the way?
All right. Do you need any, no, Dave, we gotta get going here, it's 9:30, so...
I think the board should...
Let's make a motion?
Should take a vote to direct the DPW to conduct the study as outlined. And we will reject the bid. We're not gonna be able to hold the bid, the bid's due for 30 days, Kevin, I think, or 60?
30 days, I might be able to understand whether it was 60 or 90. I would hold up as long as we could before we reject it.
Hold on to that as long as we can, but if there's a chance we could lose that, or his bid, he might say, I gotta increase my bid.
Is there a motion?
Yes, a move to have Kevin conduct the study that we just discussed.
Motion by Mr. Avignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against? Aye. Quarter one. Thank you very much, everybody. All right. Cut it back to the session, and right now, we're gonna go to a discussion vote of 30, Canard Road Realty Trust. Jamie's hub sewer agreement with Ralph Constantine. Good evening, how are you?
I hope you're good.
Good. Looks as though that we finally worked out an agreement. We've had a chance to review it.
I did, I just had one question. It said if my sewer's disposal exceeds 75% of the water usage. I know in my past experience, I've used as much as 90 to 95% of the water I use, I get pumped out. So I don't know where that number came from, I don't know if we discussed that or not. And I'm not exactly sure what a typical business like mine would use as far as sewage compared to water. I might have my own small infiltration dishes in those tanks. And I'm gonna find out if they were pumped dry before, you know, after we closed, and if there was, I'm gonna seal them up.
But I couldn't... You're saying the disposal usage. I think if you're, it's safer than... Say again, when you're just... The reason I'm saying, the water goes in, and what they're saying...
See, if I use 500,000, if I use 100,000 gallons, they're saying if I use more, if I dispose of more than 75% gallons, 75,000 gallons, I pay the full rate. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, that's what I read too. I haven't come up with a...
Well, this is on the disposal, water use, sewer usage?
How do we get 75%?
I'm not receiving a copy of this agreement letter, unfortunately. So I believe the methodology there is that some of the water will be used for serving the customers, either in glasses, or used in the process, and which entered the sewer system. Some of us, that ratio is 75%.
And I don't know what it is. I don't think it's quite that low, but I think it's a lot higher for us.
Adjust it.
Yeah, what do you think, like 85 or 95?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I was up to 90, 95%, so, but I don't know if I have an issue. So I don't know if we can compare it to what other people are using and discussing. I mean, you guys have all the records of every restaurant in town, of what water they're using and how much they're disposing of their sewage. No, but it's based on their water usage, right? It's not a real number, it's just kind of an estimate?
Right. Do you wanna change it to 90%?
I would love to change it, 90 would be fine.
Okay, so why don't we make correction on paragraph three, where it says if disposal exceeds 90s?
That's fine. Even if it did, it would only increase the rate anyway.
We can shoot you that tomorrow, have you guys sign.
So we can pass a condition on...
No, you just approve it with that one change, and then we'll just have it for you to signature. You can have it signed Monday night. We'll just vote it.
Thank you.
So just vote it as amended with that one change, I'll print it out tomorrow, you can sign it, whatever.
They can sign it tonight, because it's a different page, and we'll fix that page.
Okay.
Perfect, there you go. Thank you guys. All right, so let's get a motion. Move to approve the...
I moved that this report selected in its capacity as sewer commissioners vote to enter into an agreement with Ralph Constantine, the sole manager of 360 Canard Road Realty Trust LLC, owner of 360 Canard Road, Situate, Mass, whereby the property owner will be allowed to dispose of septic from the property at a rate of .05 cents per gallon, lower than the rate otherwise charged for septic disposal, according to the terms of the agreement passed here too with the amendments. So, discussed.
Okay, motion by, by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ralph, one question. You did ask if you would, kind of, plan out that site?
I tried to, it kinda crumbled down again, but I don't know exactly what to do there, because I'm planning on clearing the site pretty quick, so...
Have you gotten the result of the insurance and others, that you're able to start proceeding through?
Well, we're still working on some of that, but this is a big hurdle, and working, I have some other things going on, but working to get it started pretty quickly now that, now this is one of the last hurdles to overcome.
We're trying to make sure that the situation is as appealing as possible.
I know, I know, I was asking you yourself.
Once it's, do you have an estimated, kind of like, correction?
I'm hoping like July, once this guy pays, it'll be fine. All right, but thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Glad you were at 8:35.
I know, huh? Discussion vote, Harrah Heights Road Sewer Extension. Jamie, Steve, Suzanne. I'll thank you for taking back, I made a promise that we'd have you back in front of us. I know you began to build your house.
Thank you for offering that for us to come back, we appreciate that. To refresh everyone's recollection, Mr. and Mrs. Mankwich, one of the houses in 38 Harrah Heights Road. They have offered to install, as you know, Jamie, they say, a certified drain there in the town, to install the extension of the main sewer line within Harrah Heights Road to point in front of their home, of 40 feet, 60 feet, something like that, and looking for permission to open it to the town sewer. That, of course, the maintenance cost is expensive.
I'm in favor of it, that's why I can't have you come. You've just heard a meeting, if you did, and you're in the hall. We need the capacity from Cedar Point to do this. I know what both you and your wife have gone through over the years, with the appeal on property. That's, it costs, that appeal cost you guys hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't think it's right. Now you're building your house. This is in the zone Phase Four, which really should be the next phase, that should get connected. So I'm not in favor of it, I'll just let them rest in their booth and see what they think.
I look at this like a typical four-man lot, even though the house wasn't constructed when the burial distance was laid out. Should have figured in a future home to be built. You just have to, this extension from one home, does it, does the street come up to Hazel? Or does it just stop at your house? What about the homes in the beyond your house? They're tiny as well, those spaghetti lots.
One house is, but the house behind it isn't, so, yeah. I was gonna talk to that owner and extend it, bringing down further, so they benefit from that in the future.
Would that be a spaghetti line, Jamie?
No, it would be a main trunk line, the main line, all the way down.
And that house is built now, that one, that maybe you're talking about. Aren't there like two more Stetson houses up there beyond you?
That's what I'm talking about, that, 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 that area, right up to his house. So I know he has a small piece of property with a septic pool, and eventually, we'll probably have to, you know, upgrade it or protect it to the series, so...
So I can't, I can't address this in isolation. I, you know, we've got two instances on our agenda tonight. And I would suggest that we as a board discuss them together. Because in my opinion, I can't say yes to one resident and no to another, another neighborhood. So, you know, I, we've got Will here. I don't have a problem because of the issues that you've experienced, as well as the issues that the Christian State folks have faced. It's capacity, right, that's the issue for me, really, is do we have the capacity for everything? So, it is pending Will's approval that we can take this on. I mean, we've all talked about managing, you know, bringing those 20 homes a year on, whatever, just try to start to right-size the fund and give our residents the opportunity to get on, and not just, you know, new developments. But, you know, with all the numbers that we got last week, and the last meeting two weeks ago, where the INI is so significant, but is taking up so much capacity, that, that was, you know, that's very enlightening. I don't think that the most recent numbers, but it's really changed quite significantly in the past two years with regards to the amount of seaworm that's going in. So, I just think, I would like to hear everyone's opinion. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I know it's probably a little bit unconventional, but I'm not sure that I can vote on, I'm just in isolation, having them two back-to-back, and they're both sewer capacity questions. So that's just where I'm coming from right now. I don't know what the real thought is towards that. I don't have a problem with that, is if you're just hanging out for a little bit, and then we'll talk to the folks from Persimmon, and come back and then... Each one? Because it's really the same thing.
Sure.
But the difference is, one house compared to 20 houses or... Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the big... I mean, how many bedrooms in an house?
Four.
Four, so it's a, how much?
Yeah, I get it.
Whoa, what's the, what's the...
About 200 gallons.
200 gallons. And what's your sense on what we can do?
We could certainly handle...
One more house?
Yeah, one more house. I would ask that the decision be contingent upon a few things, such as being located within an already planned area of sewer expansion, or to limit applicants from other private parties for entering into the sewer system. I would also make it a case-by-case acceptance, where concerns about capacity and blown infiltration get looked at for every sort of consideration for private extension, because capacity is so limited. We don't want to worry to win our moratoriums.
Right.
So, I'll ask you, so we don't have to ask it from Bob, it's up, what's 20 houses? What's the number? I don't accept.
Well, there's 24, not development, but we have definitive yeses from only 10.
Okay, so, okay, so what's, like 10 or 20 more houses, is that pushing it?
I mean, it's difficult to say, because the biggest factors in our capacity have been groundwater and tidal infiltration, and not new developments or new connections to the sewer system. New connections have a pretty minimal impact, especially since it's all new services, brand-new pipes. Whereas, you know, comparing our figures from 2016, when we were in a drought, to our averages from the years outside the drought, the massive swing in our numbers just from weather and climate alone makes it difficult to make a guarantee.
Yeah, but when you're full, you're full, no matter where it's coming from.
Yeah, that's the challenge, yeah.
So are we full?
We have less than 10% remaining.
Kevin, did you wanna say something?
Still, the only thing I was gonna add, whichever way it's voted, I'd just ask that the DPW has a final say on the plans for the tie-in, so that, you know, if a manhole's needed, or something else is needed, it has to be approved by us prior to installation. Whichever way the board agrees, that's all I'm saying.
So we're talking about just Jamie's, or are we talking about Bob's neighborhood as well? And Bob, Bob just said there were 10 people on board, so, or how we could even entertain tying in that neighborhood? What, are you gonna just sue half of them? I don't know, you'd have to...
Bob, let's vote this one first, and then we can bring Bob up and hear what he has to say.
Well, I think that, I mean, I can't speak for the other, but I'm not aware of that. I just found out about that. Tonight, we are in the future expansion zone for the sewer, and it is a single home, a couple hundred gallons a day. And I think that Mr. Mankwich has offered to help, you know, put in that private, I shouldn't say it's a private hookup, but privately install a sewer main down the road, which will help the town in the long run when that phase is finally completed, and then be done with the spec by, you know, licensed certified drain there in town. Kevin's point is absolutely, you know, appropriate, conditioned upon their approval of an infrastructure being necessary. I think Mr. Mankwich has already indicated that we want to, you know, if the DPW wants us to go a little further, we're happy to do that, we'll do that even further. And luckily, he has that skill set. So, I would ask that, you know, well, this is a different case, this is sort of, it's a different case. It's in the expansion district, already a planned expansion district. And Mr. Mankwich happens to have the appropriate skill set to achieve some important and valuable infrastructure for the town at his own cost expectancy.
And then what about the type of fee, Mr. Jamie?
So, Mr. Mankwich is asking for the board to consider that he applied for a privilege fee back in 2005. It was back when that fee was $5,000. So, given the fact that he's going to, you know, put in all the infrastructure, we're asking if the board would consider holding that fee for him, if he would pay that, that's the privilege tie-in fee. Which is what he asked, what he, it was denied in 2005, but that was the privilege.
I say no, I'd say yes to the attachment and no to the deducting of the, is what I would say.
I agree, I agree. Getting attached, but yeah, it's the fee today, not the way it was in 2005. I mean, it'll work, but if you want to, that's gonna be more beneficial for you than anything. And do it with a septic system, or something like that.
Can you remind me again why this is so critical, just like in two seconds, like why, why do we really need this?
As far as the house itself, I mean, it will, it will, the lot is sufficient to sustain the septic system, but it's a very difficult system. It's a mounded system, hugely mounded system, due to, you know, the approximate depth of groundwater, et cetera, and the capacity necessary. So essentially, the house gets built on a lot, and the lot, the yard area is pretty much wiped out by the septic system. So, this is a much more agreeable scenario than the septic system. We've all seen those systems, and they are, you know, when they're necessary, they're necessary. But here, we're hoping that this is an alternative that will allow us not to have to put that system in, you know, for the neighborhood as well. Because they're unsightly, they take, you know, they ruin the yard, so it's...
A lot of people have those, that's not a very good argument. But what I would say is the line runs up the street. It just doesn't touch as properly, does it? How close does it come? Every other street on Harrah Heights Road is...
Every other street on Howard Heights Road is, this is the main one of the road.
Oh.
This was a lot that, as John said, was in front of the ZBA. Jamie owned it for a long time, as far as I know, and, and then he got through the ZBA process and built a hole, you know.
So there's a pipe already there?
Well, yeah. Very, very close to his house, so that's.
I didn't make that, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear, but there's a pipe already there and it has a stub. Jamie can describe it better than me, but there's a piece of the pipe that's ready to connect to the next pipe that's in front of his house, that would be in front of his house. It was anticipated that it was gonna keep going, it just stopped. But, right, what's it called?
It's stub, right? There's a stub that's on the manhole that's facing the.
There's a manhole and stub in it facing his property.
I think Kevin had some.
Kevin, did you say? You know, I, I just had a question in, where Mr. Mankiewicz is, is in this type of work. Um, you know, we've had the Drew project or some of the other big projects do INI remediation. Maybe in, in alternative, and I don't wanna give ideas, maybe he could reset a couple castings for Will and improve INI in a couple areas to displace the, the value that he's gonna be putting in. You know, like two castings or something like that in, in exchange. And that would make up for the INI for the additional house. If the board is looking for that, I just wanna throw it up there, that's all.
Is that something you'd be amenable to, Jamie?
Uh. Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what that entails. This is all Greek to me.
I assume it's, it's to offset the cost for doing it. In other words, what you're doing is helping the INI, reducing INI. So at least two castings, which would be the ones that are like with a gasket that you would put on manhole covers, say Cedar Point where maybe they, they need to have replaced, they need to do that. And that would be a cost because obviously that's your job, so if you're, you should do it and that would offset the, 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 the fee, is that what you're saying?
I would just say it would offset the value of inflow that he's bringing into the system, those 200 gallons, you know, just use that as a trade.
Just like a pole.
Just like what?
Just like what?
Just.
You don't want Jericho Road too?
Well, I think that's a good suggestion.
On the one hand, it's just, I'm paying for the, the installation of this main trunk line that's gonna come up in, in front of my property with manhole covers. Um, and then I'm gonna have to pay for the betterment on top of that, so that's, that's, I'm gonna be paying a lot to have this happen, to connect to the sewer. It's gonna be around $30,000 for me to do this.
I actually tend to agree that if we're gonna, if he's gonna pay the profit, betterment and he's doing these, you know, infrastructure improvement that to add up for the requirement is excessive.
Well, Kevin's idea is to take, he's, he's gonna be adding 200 to the system, 200 gallons, so do what it proves.
But he's paying the full penalty.
Yeah, but we wouldn't hit it.
Right, but if we, yeah, I.
I think, I, I'd say just the, the betterment and the installation is what we would be looking at. Motion, any discussion further?
Do you mind with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Kevin?
Move to approve the extension of the existing sewer line to Harbor Lights Road at the expense of J.B. Mankiewicz, owner of 38 Heights, uh, excuse me, Harbor Heights Road, pending DPW approval of a plan. And I don't know how we get Will's stuff in there in terms of, I guess that's just.
It's already in there. It's already in there.
That it's in the existing section?
And contingent on being in the area is currently in the similar plan.
Oh, that's not enough.
Okay. Contingent on.
So.
Contingent on.
Is there?
The contingent on being in the area is currently in the similar plan.
All right, so move to Mr. Mankiewicz. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Handfield. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you for the rally.
Thank you very much, folks, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, question to say.
Gentlemen, who are you? Who are you? Well.
Hi, guys.
Not sure about the city, cause you've said through the earlier meetings, so. 10 homes are what you're looking for?
Well.
With the opportunity to go up to 24s.
It's a, it's a 24 max.
Ones are the, the 23.
23, no. And we've had three information sessions where we can, you can confidently say that there's 10 homes that would commit right of life. And we don't know what the other, or maybe 13 would do.
See, the predicament, I would, now, I guess the question is this, how you envision it? Because typically, if you're connected with sewer pipe, boom, all 23 get hit with the betterment and we're gonna be paying it. Um, whether or not they connect or not, they're gonna get hit. Here, you're, I assume you're asking, we only, we only, uh, from my memory of the plan, that we connect the very, is it the end of the plan, at the end of the piping system? Because there's a common, there's a common system. Common system.
Right.
So of that, by basically plugging into the town sewer, 10 people, 10 homes get connected with the option of the remaining 20 or 13 at a future date would connect. Presumably, if they sell and they're finding that they have a total of five issues, then they'd say, okay, I wanna connect. I think, the reason why I'm going through this is I, I think that's a danger because we might not have the capacity to connect at that point. And it's interesting, cause I'm not sure whether our policy, how that policy would work, because the policy is generally with a pipe in front of the house, the street, if it's not there, um, I wouldn't be on the board. But I just think that the thought, it's an interesting kind of, um, question to ask because then we say, what happens in 15 years? They say, well, I wanna connect now, or like, we're tapped out, we're not gonna be able to, and I would say, well, the system's right there.
If, if, if I may, when, when we had these information sessions in the neighborhood, we made, we made clear to people that the, the, if somebody were to do that, saying we're not ready to do it, that it was clearly their risk that there would not be capacity at the time that they were ready, nor would the tie-in fee be the same as it is today. So they ran the, they ran the risk of those issues if they decided that if we were approved as a development and they chose not to tie in, they were taking on the risk of capacity and an increase in the tying costs. So we made that very clear to people.
Don't we always charge everybody regardless of whether you want it or not?
Well, normally you would if you put the pipe down, but here the pipes are already existing and we're only tying into like the, I don't wanna say chamber or like one of the manholes, right Kevin?
And it's like a valve.
So it kinda comes in.
Doesn't everybody have it? Isn't everybody going down to that chamber?
No.
There's all, some of them are, right?
There's about seven or eight that would be tied into Tilden Road in front of the school and the infrastructure's in for them to tie into it. It's just a matter of getting the green light from the town to tie in, but, you know, Bob mentioned there's 10 homes that are ready to tie in now. The other people, if they choose not to tie in, each, each individual house has its own set of individual leaching trenches and there's a reserve area in between them. So if 10 people tie in now, they're tied in the sewer. But the other people who choose to wait, if for some reason they can't tie in the sewer and there's, you know, leaching area fails because of the age, they're, they're going there for in '97 or '98, so they're about 20 years old now. But if they were to fail, what they do is they're gonna have to build a reserve system on their, you know, for their.
So they don't have a lateral going into the, into the main in front of their house right now?
The, um.
16 of them.
Most of them.
Always in the common chamber. They're not used right now because they have to use the leaching field. But the moment we, we put the common chamber online, soon is about that at some point they could turn and connect to it.
Why don't they just turn it by wheel?
Cause they don't want.
They're spaghetti lines.
Every, every house has a septic gate and a pump chamber. And the pump chamber pumps the water up into an individual leaching area. Right at the intersection of INI, there's a, a chamber there with, I think, um, 16 pipes and there are individual pipes. What they do is they cut the pipes and let the water drop into the manhole and go right into the sewer and to the road. That, that part of the system is already constructed, was constructed as part of the subdivision and infrastructure. The other homes that are further down the line, they would be tied by gravity more to the line of Tilden Road itself. So there's about 16 homes that are on pump chambers and they were all tied into the sewer right at the intersection of Persimmon and Tilden. And the other ones were tied into the manhole at the end. The last manhole in the line was.
But so everybody is tied into the sewer, but they're not using it, they're using the leaching system, right? So how would we know if one of the people just threw this, had a plumber through the switch and now they're going into the chamber of the street?
And the only way you do is open the cover and see if there, any one of those 16 pipes are over and cut.
Yeah, that's, that's not what you do.
Pretty simple.
I know, but we don't go around and look and, that's why we tell everybody and say. We say.
Well, go check.
I do. We already had one property there connected and part of their terms of agreement was that the sewer division would routinely check that location for any defects or, or side effects that were anticipated, like odor complaints or odor buildup issue.
So you do check it fairly regularly or?
Uh, probably about four times a year. Just swing by, pop the cover, take a look at, uh, give a lift, walk around. Mr. Only one, that one house connected at this time.
But what?
So, so you have a number of homes that are gonna tie in and then another home to the law. How do you know who's who?
We don't know that they won't show up. And again, as I, as I mentioned when I was before you, we had three information sessions and, you know, how many people come to town meeting, no matter how many times you tell them, some people just don't show up. If, if they were to receive a letter saying, you're authorized to tie in, there's 50/50 chance they'd say, yeah, we'll, we'll do that. So they haven't said they wouldn't, it's just a question of, of, we don't know what decision we're making.
And you only attend at definitively said yes.
And are those 10 ones that already are piped down, you just have to cut them and pipe?
Most, most.
Joe and I are two that aren't. Joe is here and we're, we're two that would go directly into Tilden.
So you're gonna need construction work to get over into Tilden?
It's already, uh, it's, no, we're there, it's already in the road. It's very similar, but it's not part of the 16 chamber.
So they don't have to go into either street to, to do the work? I don't even need to go down the side.
Houses different than the other proposal I'm now drawing on. What I brought, no, uh, off of Ice, coffee and oil. Houses different than, than those people.
Cause in my mind, these guys, I'm sorry, I didn't want to say that. In my mind, this neighborhood, um, has already really been accounted for, right? Years ago when they were approved. They were approved, they were approved years ago.
Who approved them?
The, the.
Plane board?
Plane board.
Plane board. Well, you have those sort of commissions.
Well, maybe they were then.
It was a, it was a condition of approval?
I don't know. The government changed, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I agree, but so is Will Vestal, you know, I mean, he's been here three times. So, I mean, it's like whoever's most organized comes first.
No, I, I think there, I, I think, I think they have a lot, but I just don't know if they should pay for everybody. I don't know why we just do 10 and not everyone. And then it's, do we have the capacity to do it? I mean, part of me doesn't want everybody because of the capacity issue. The other part is I don't wanna have to monitor the other 18 out, or other 12 houses and see if they do or not.
Can I add one thing to this?
Hold on a second. Paul, if this was being built today, is, you cannot convince me that the sewer system would look like it's, does now.
If you built it today, you'd have sewer laying down the center of the road.
They, they, these are spaghetti lines, right?
They're forest mains, residential health.
Who owns these lines?
The homeowner is doing it.
Okay, where are they located?
They're within, um.
Are they in the private, in the public right of way?
They're, they're in the, I don't get the.
Oh, you know where I'm going with this. What happens if this, if this fails down the road? All right, and I'm not saying I'm far against it. If it fails and his, if someone buys his house and the problems in the private line and the public right of way, he's paying for it. That's like construction that we don't do and we wouldn't approve it if we were, if this was being built now and we put a sewer in, it would be a lot different, correct? Is it something we're gonna inherit that we don't wanna inherit down the road?
I mean, the first thing going or probably swimming in, the, the biggest way it would go is a septic where we dig in a trench and they broke the plastic pipe, they just want pipes, but what they have to do is splash them and put them back together. It'd be a simple fix, but I was questioning, I didn't question who pays for that? The homeowner or the town? I mean, you do have infrastructure within a private way, mainly, you know, the main lines and the sewer manholes going into Tilden Road, sewer line into the road, but everything else is on a private property. And the, and one reason we designed this was because of the large arms. So we, we, where, where we get, or the condition that when that large arm is lifted, they wanna tie in.
This was designed back when, 94, actually?
94.
Aaron?
No, I think we covered all my questions only that last time. Um, I think it's, um, I think they, by rights have a good claim to get tied in. And it runs in, it meets all of the other criteria, you know, um, yeah, I'm not crazy about the idea of Will having to monitor the situation. That concerns me more than anything. That is, that's a new piece of information I really hadn't thought about, but, um, mostly I think that it's in their favor to get, to get this in.
The board should just be prepared. People that live on the end of that road, some of these roads, well, that's the only one that comes to mind, but when we sewed Hadley School, we put stubs from there up to the four-way intersection. If I were one of those people listening tonight, I'd be at our next meeting and I'd wanna get tied in and, and have every right to, the stubs for every house along the way.
Well, they don't have the ladder that, oh.
If there's, if there's a line in front of the house and here we are letting people tie in, and that, and that's, that's fine and I don't have a problem with it, but I'd just say yes to everyone. Be consistent.
It's, the policy says that if the line goes in front of your house, you have to tie in, right Kevin?
I'm sorry. I was looking at it. I can tell you're dating.
If the line, the policy is that if the line goes in front of your house, you have a right to tie in.
If the line goes in front of your house, you have a right to tie in.
I would say everybody on Anvino could show up at the next meeting.
But John, we, we do have a caveat with that on some force mains, the force mains, Sean told me this one was set up to have stubs. Some force mains, just because it goes all the way down the street, it's, it's not conducive to make tie-ins to the force main because it's, it's dangerous. It could also, as, as the main pump goes, it could also fill up the houses from the force main, if that makes sense. So you don't wanna just cut into a force main that's gonna have large flows. You know, for example, the flows that come from the pump station, you gotta be real careful. Just because a force main goes in front of your house, doesn't automatically mean that you can tie in. So I, I confused.
So in that case, would you have like a sister line or something that you'd have to?
We've, we've said they're not eligible.
No, but typically, if you had a force main in front of your house, like Quincy, Brandon Hap has a force main, if they don't have a, somebody connecting.
They might have a sister line or they might have something else that goes.
Otherwise, it would fill up their basement or something.
It could potentially have checked out Cableway or something for that.
That might be the case, Tabby, I don't know. Paul, does that, does that pump up Anvino? I don't know, can I remember that, but I remember.
The thing about when, when we designed that line for the town, we, we asked outside the pipe for the houses that would be along the way. Um, they weren't gonna wanna tie in necessarily, but they wanted to provide the pipe, so it would be large enough for them to tie in.
That's not a gravity line from the school, I, I mean, this is, this is.
No, it's just, it's a force main to the school, it's a, I just press the.
So I'd say everyone on Anvino to Sean.
Well, I just, I'd just be consistent, that's all.
No, I agree with you.
I think Will's breaking out in the sweat.
So I guess to Tony's point, do you do 10 or do you say, hold the system? Do you say all 24? And then they take, is how they can tie in or they don't have to?
Well, we have to anticipate that all 24 would be eligible. I mean, that's, that could happen tomorrow, they go, hey, that's just fair.
Right.
So we're not deciding on 10, in my mind, we're deciding on potential, 10 to 20.
I think, I think you have to, because even if you put a sewer line down the street, you're gonna get the betterment, so you could still have a septic system, of course, You could still have septic systems, of course, we don't want to tie in, but they get charged anyways. I think the best thing to do would say, "All twenty-three homes are gonna have to pay whether they tap in or not."
That's the way, that's the way they, it's been laid out now, like Green Bush and the Cliffs. You got charged with betterment even if you didn't tie in, isn't that correct?
And then when they're charged with betterment, we, we don't know, because it's not a voluntary.
No.
So are you able to say yes for twenty-three people, or do you need to, you know, if we vote to give it to you, to all twenty-three people, they're all gonna be hit with a seventeen thousand dollar bill? Is that what, you know, like on street acceptance, you gotta get seventy-five percent of the people or something to agree, or how's that?
There's a percentage, there is a percentage.
Well, I think it's a little bit different because it's not a betterment, it's a fee. And I think in the case of the street, excuse me, because they have to bring the street up to code, everybody has to be willing to share in that expense. Where this is technically, especially the way the system is designed, where it's easy to do, it's almost easy to do on a come-as-you-are basis. I don't know how you'd want to handle that. And to the issue of it having to be monitored, we've known a lot of the people for a long time, and I can't imagine somebody, you know.
It's, you know, it's not necessarily, it's just you never know, but it's always...
But I guess my point is, if we vote tonight to give that neighborhood twenty-three hookups, is that what you want? Do you want all of your neighbors to be filled with that?
Is that how that works when we do that?
Well, that's, that is, that is a question.
Do you want to go back and talk to your neighbor?
No, no, if you were doing mine-in.
What's that?
If you were doing mine-in, would everybody in mine-in have to pay?
Yeah.
If that's the way you do it, that's the way...
I thought they only paid when they hooked up.
Now, the pipe was...
They ran down my street, everyone ran.
If that's, if that's the town policy, that's the town policy.
When I bought my house, it had not been hooked up yet, but the betterment was, it was part of the expense. But then what's gonna happen to the rest of your neighbors who aren't, who aren't on board?
That's an issue everywhere.
But we, we do, when we do sections, Green Bush, the Cliffs, it's a timing approval. Correct?
For streets.
No, we're talking about, um...
Well, the timing approves of the sewer. Sewer project.
Okay, this is kind of similar though, what shouldn't, shouldn't all those people or have a meeting where they were invited to to say yes and no, and then the majority will move, or two-thirds will move? It's, is it, is it all, I mean?
You could do that.
I'm one of those, I'm one of his neighbors and I don't want it for whatever reason. You know, is it legal? Yeah, for whatever, is it legal for us deciding for them, and they're not here or?
Maybe you think about having another meeting as much as, and notify everybody that we're having a meeting to talk about this, because they're not here, thirteen of them. And let's put it to this way, if you didn't know about, you're gonna go get the fee, connection fee.
Free drive, that's a big deal.
It's a lot of money to be able to say, "Wait a minute, how come I wasn't informed this was going to be?"
Yeah, there's one, there's one home that's in the process of being sold. The thing was already down, another one's gone abandoned, and they're gonna find this out without any discussion.
Right.
You might think that would be a better...
The other recall though is that I just, I don't know, there was a work issue, it was... When you do the full betterment, it's because you're installing a new system and all of that. We're not doing that, we're not doing that here.
This is a fee.
This is just a fee, connection fee.
And what's the connection fee? Oh, it is, oh. I'm sorry, how much is it?
Like fourteen thousand?
No, sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
And what's a betterment? Oh, it's for investment, for the... Okay, sorry, yeah, I got, I got. Yeah, so that's a distinction. Right, so there is a betterment, it's a hookup fee. Yeah, so there's, if they don't hook up, then they don't have the hookup fee. They don't charge a betterment.
But it's weird because it's one system. So now we're monitoring components of a system?
So what's the cost of the betterment?
No, no, it isn't one system, every house is.
I know, but they all come into that one chamber or they go to Tilden. There's sixteen houses going on one chamber.
There's sixteen pipes, one one from each house, going in the chamber, so as every pipe is cut. You know, let's, let's say that chamber's got sixteen pipes in it. If only ten of them want to tie in, then you don't cut ten pipes. And the other six would still be going into the leaching field in front of the houses on Tilden Road. Because every, every house is...
I understand, yeah. But now we gotta go check the thing and say, "Okay, how many pipes are dirty, how many aren't cut?" That's not what we do, it's not, it's not what we want.
No, but someone's not gonna cut a pipe if they hear the pump line coming on while you're trying to cut it, it'd be a mess, but... Can I ask you a question? When, when this was approved back in the nineties, the tying fees were five thousand dollars at the time, and they're, they're ready to connect and we couldn't, why was the fee seventeen thousand to nothing?
Because you're connecting today.
Because it's two thousand nine.
Because gasoline was a buck a gallon.
Yeah, I went over all the costs.
But the difference is that there's no infrastructure to be put in the streets, everything's being done on site. It's the mayor cutting sixteen pipes, and the other pipes are in to tie their houses into that.
But the infrastructure cost is covered by the betterment.
Pardon?
The infrastructure cost is covered by the betterment. Hookup fees are the privilege of the sewer system, you're paying for five million, you're paying for thousands.
Seventeen thousand is for the hookup fee.
Yeah.
So will you, you're checking quarterly anyways?
Yep.
Well, what do you think? Twenty-three, ten?
Um, it's, it's within, you know, acceptable limits capacity-wise. I think it's a weird situation where there are several homes part of a shared vault system and other homes that aren't part of that vault system. And whether or not it's gonna be assessed as a fee or as a requirement for them to connect, depending on how you interpret the letter from the planning board. The planning board letter made me believe that they'd be required or directed to connect by that letter, but I'm not sure if that letter is enforceable to that action or they're still current. If it was going to be an imposed requirement for them to connect, I would suggest it only apply to the systems in that existing vaults and not to the other properties that don't have lines already running to the sewer system. If it was done by a fee basis, I'd recommend, you know, per, per house requesting to connect. But either way, there will be requirements on these lines when they go to the pipe or permit. I would require that the lines be pressure tested, make sure there's no leaks, no issues of that. The actual vault that they share, there's some minor improvements that I would recommend to be done if we're gonna have all those houses entering that vault. The outlet pipe just needs to be re-grated so that it's flush with the bottom of the vault to prevent pooling in there. And a couple other very minor requirements, some gaskets and fittings and bells.
So would those cost them, you want to do more betterment to all homes regardless of hookup fee? Is that how it works?
Those would be the costs that they would have to do.
Or is it, are the whole houses that are hooking up? It's that's where, you know, that was in the details.
So go to the association as a whole. I'm not sure how you guys work with it, with their post, the ten homes that are connecting or whether it's gonna be everything. That's on them, but they have to be sure that the system's ready to be connected, they want it actually connected, and then pay the connection fee. I guess it's funny, maybe it's because it's late, but I could see it going different ways, and I think, you know, at this point, I'm inclined to say, "Go with the ten, the others are at their peril, they'd lose it." And they may complain in the future, but I guess the question, did they have notice? I'm sure you contacted them all and they're aware of it. Because otherwise, what you're doing in essence, it's a charging fee to twenty-three, which they may not have noticed. I'd have to have noted, I'd have to know that every twen, oh, everybody but the one house that's already connected has noticed that this is what's gonna happen. At least they are.
Well, certainly the house that's sold and the new family moving in, that has no idea.
I just think that's something that they moved in and that they don't want.
So do we make that attempt as a town to notify them, to let them know that this request is coming with the board and...
You're good.
I, I think...
I just think if we're gonna do it all, that we can't do it tonight, because we have to give the next ten, then we can do it. I think if you, because you have verification from ten people.
Has, has town council reviewed the planning board letter at all? Have they provided an opinion?
No.
Or opinion on the subject, anyway?
No.
Kevin, what do you think of this? I've never heard of such a thing.
You know, um, I'm just, I'm a little concerned, I know Will said we have ten percent capacity left, but we still have some, you know, some stuff coming on. You know, I'm just, it's an interesting situation, it's something that you don't run into every day. Because they're not, as Will said, subject to sewer, it's a planning board regulation, but the sewer commissioners never voted on it and said, "Yes, you can tie in to sewer at a future date." You know, and that, and that obviously that's why they're here now, or otherwise they'd be able to tie in. And it's not a tie-in by privilege because it was, it was in the planning board rules and, you know, on findings, correct Paul?
Yes.
So, which was preventing them from tying in, so it's tricky.
In the past, I've sat in front of many poor health teams, and the only way people could tie in is if they're only operated was a tight tank. And even Tricia said, "Those work," so she wouldn't even really accept that.
She didn't even want to accept that, she wanted...
No, she did, she said, "Hey, they're in Nantucket and so forth, and so that, that's, that's a doable system." I mean, we had a restaurant on that one, so people had to jump through hoops to tie in.
I don't know, I don't know what the plan was, I can only assume, like when we talk about the six phases and with the three phases that were discussed at the presentation Will made a couple of weeks ago, that the area that we were sitting in at some point was, was approved to go on. And because we were new development, once everybody was in, it should, needed to be tied in because that was part of the plan for that particular area of town. We're before you now, because we don't know the remaining phases, we don't fit in any of them, technically. So it's sort of like our phase has already happened back in nineteen ninety-four, which I would assume is what prompted this.
Your neighborhood out front, the alphabet streets were done in the seventies, about the same time Lighthouse Point was near. Obviously, your neighborhood wasn't built, so that was, to your point, it was the school at that time, so...
Isn't there a stub in front of this house though?
Yeah.
Where? Stub in front of where?
In front of their house?
On Tilden?
Yeah, and he can't tie in because...
Well, those, those lines were in the seventies, I don't know if there's a stub there or not, I, I don't even know if the school was...
Somehow we can just hook up, it's something, yeah, yeah.
Aside from the vault, there are no other available stubs. There are a couple other connections on Tilden, but they were spaghetti line connections. I don't know the history on them, but I presume they would be like an emergency septic spaghetti connection.
There's a main on Tilden in front of, well, Wompatack?
Uh, no, Wompatack sewer connection goes out the back of Wompatack to Calmosek behind there.
Vermont.
Vermont, thank you.
So where's the connection then?
How do they get to the main?
Like, or...
Their, their vault is at the intersection of Tilden and Persimmon, and then goes down, I think it might be J Street or one of those streets.
J Street is serving, it's serving.
So the vault is connected, Will?
The, yeah, the vault is connected to Town Center.
And from, from Persimmon Drive, the sewer line in Tilden Road keeps going towards the harbor, and it stops in front of the houses in, in this development. And the last manhole we go, it's probably down through, pretty sure, doesn't, that's a gravity line, which is...
All right, um...
I'll make a motion. See if you can... I say we, um, hook up the ten houses that want to go in and cut those pipes and let them hook up.
And what is the other houses like this one sale wants to tie in?
They gotta come to force.
They gotta come to force, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, signed by... Hold on, sign the, his, uh, current discussion, yep?
Question. I'm sure it adds thirty-five Hitler name. There's two systems, two houses that are gravity, how do you address those? They're not, I'm not connected to the vault, and there's a second house that's not connected to the vault. My septic system is out on Tilden Road, and my line goes from inside on Hitler name out towards Tilden Road, the septic system up there. So I have a straight shot on gravity right to the sewer in the street. That was the intent.
I understand.
But there's already...
It's already hooked up. It's already hooked up.
So there's no, there's no digging from my house or into the street.
There's no digging.
There's no digging from any way, really.
It already exists.
Right. It already exists, yeah. But you still have to pay the betterment.
Of course, but I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to see an issue where we're trying to compare a gravity system to a force, uh, force main system, cutting off a pipe into a vault. We're not all the same, there is, there is an A and there's a B.
So we'll talk about each case individually and figure out the best way to tie it.
And see if we have capacity.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, signed by Ms. Curran. Obviously, that motion's subject to review from the APW, ensuring that it's...
And the recommendations by the, by the sewer department here, the sewer division, that Will listed on March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So that's what the motion would possibly be.
Okay. Well, I have moved to approve a sewer connection for the ten homes in Pushing Estates pursuant to all sewer rules and regulations and other applications along the sewer department memo.
That was a great motion.
Perfect, see how good you were, that I see our, our speech at ten thirty. That's why you get the flowers, and that's Will's move, who's the boss now?
All right, anything else?
Okay, Will? Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. Okay, thank you.
If I, if I vote for this, I'm gonna vote for other ones that are very similar to this, and I'm gonna fight for that much love.
So do you?
Someone came before us three times and was sent back.
Well, we're also still waiting for Will to come to us to say, with the revenue model, how many, you know, hookups do we need a year to make this a break-even operation? So there's gonna be twenty a year that we've got to pour into our system on our current infrastructure.
And with zero ionized, I would like to think.
Right.
Not zero ionized, you have to remove ionized if we're bringing...
They're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna add to the ionized problem, these systems will be...
But they're gonna add flow to the system, so you're gonna have to take ionized out of the system to make room for passing for these.
So Bob, you want to fix a manhole?
Learn more about sewers than last time.
All in favor, if I was saying aye, aye, anybody? No against, it ends. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aye, but, um, but, um, yeah, there, I'm sorry, but there is one question, is can you provide us with a list of the homes that will be, so that he knows what he's looking for?
So you know who to build?
It was part of my apartment, they identify every line.
It'll be like a...
We'll do it by water. We'll do it by water.
Exactly, very good.
Good night, thank you, thank you.
Actually, I have a... Take him the ball and skip a little bit.
All right, we're gonna move on to eight fifty-five discussion vote, twenty-one draft to add release of a restrictive covenant. Jim, is there anything presented on, or is it just basically documentation? So evidently, there was a house that was on Bradford Ave that had been razed and reconstructed at one time. And as a result, when they rebuilt it, they were restricted because of the sewer mortaring. And they were only allowed to have three bedrooms. Now that that has been lifted, evidently, they must be looking to expand to have four bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
But it's intense.
Two bedrooms are allowed.
Two are bedroom, so now they're looking to expand, and they want that condition, or the restrictive covenant removed from their deed so they can do it. And they have paid the betterment, right? Well, that's not an issue.
Have they owned the sewer?
Yeah, since nineteen sixty-seven. And connected to.
Just like a new hookup. No, I'm saying you're adding capacity. You're adding a bedroom or two? Yeah.
That's something we should talk about in our rules, regulations, and things like that.
Because the betterment they paid was probably five thousand dollars.
Right.
Should there be a fee associated with it?
Was the betterment assessed at the number of homes that get tied in or the number of bedrooms per house? It's nineteen seventies.
The betterment is based on.
Fee, I guess.
The pipe and the distance in front of the house and divided up by.
Units.
Doesn't have anything to do with the bedrooms in the house.
Okay.
They've already, they've already paid it to them.
And the current one doesn't take into effect the size of assets.
They're already, there's already flow there. And anybody who's connected to a town sewer right now could easily increase another bedroom or two if they wanted to. Here, because of the restrictive covenant, they're not allowed to. And all we're doing is removing, peeling that back because of the mortaring. They paid it. That's how it's been.
So the motions are in the camera.
So is it for the discussion or?
Nope.
All right.
Move that declaration of restrictive covenant recorded in the Department of County Registry of Deeds at Book twenty-one thirty-three hundred and thirty, page one fifty-seven, one sixty, is no longer necessary and therefore, as sewer commissioners, the dwelling of twenty-one Bradford Ave is no longer limited to use. This house can be occupied or used as more than a two-bedroom house.
Motion by Ms. Camfield, signed by Mr. Harris, all in paper. Okay. Now let's move on to the discussion, assignment of one article for special town meeting, which is this Monday, May thirteenth. So if it's okay with the board, I would like to take this opportunity to say that I would like to hand over the article, my final article, town meeting.
You go.
And I'd be honored to do it.
I make a motion that Chair John Denny give us a special town meeting law article.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, thank you.
Hi, guys.
So that should be it. Any other discussion? According to, I'd like to talk for that. I feel bad. That's it.
That's why you're dressing your hair for him.
Dr. Bryce is saying, do a good job. You'll do it.
I know Joe will do a good job.
All right. Nine fifteen. What is like in policies and procedures at ten fifty-two?
Did we read through those?
You wanted to take another time?
I could've called you in the morning and told you.
I, uh, these are the board would like to do.
Well, I'm not clear on which version here is, is it the last version? There are three different pieces that I read through. There's one edited, one unedited version. There's one Jones comment, and there's one Karen's comment. So is the red line Jones? It's not the corrections, not taken.
John does, one says Danny at the top, one says Karen.
And the others. So there were, yeah, there were a number of general things for both of us that Lorraine outlined in her summary, um, that maybe we should, that we spent a second on.
Well, I mean, if we put it off a week, we can just ignore all of Jones' comments.
And you know, my comments are the ones that say, you know, so this was drafted in two thousand seventeen. And of course, the comments that I was working on at the time, Jim wasn't our town administrator, was that the role of selectmen, I think I deleted a lot of roles in there.
But I kinda like what you deleted.
Well, that's my whole point.
Not kind of, I do.
It's, it's important that the board has. I'll put you this way, the charter is very pro-town administrator. It's one of the strongest ones we have in the state. Jim said that, Tricia said that, and we see that. I, I think, you know, for purposes of the roles of selectmen, we can really, our roles are really diminished or are diminished. That's why I deleted that section, basically, to contact the department heads or talk to them. I think we should be able to, still appoint. If it gets out of hand, then the town administrator has every right to tell us that you're stepping over our bounds because the domain of the employees are under the town administrator. But I think we should at least have that opportunity to talk to them. I do think it's important that the town employees then communicate that to the town administrator, too. That's fair, right? To think that we have every right, every right of officials to be able to talk to the employees.
Sorry, I can't talk, my tongue's bleeding.
So, I mean, I'll tell you what, we can always post.
I had a little different take on that, is that I, I question things like inefficiencies. So we do, you know, six phone calls over the weekend about a broken traffic light, and we just wanna let Kevin know about that. I don't wanna go through Jim for that. That's ridiculous, just to let him know. The way it's written is I tell Jim, and Jim tells Kevin, and, or if I talk to Kevin, then I gotta notify you that on something routine, it's just routine.
This was actually a question, oh, it was a Sean or Tony when I had my interview. I think it was Sean. He said, you know, if there's a pothole or a street layout, call the department, email the department head. That's fine, I don't need to be involved in that. But you can't have five individuals selecting, going into the department, saying, I want you to do this, and I want you to do that, and I want this done, and I want that done, in, in trying to run the individual departments, because it's gonna overload them.
Right, that's not fair. We have gone through every construction.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't, I've never got a lot of people for calling a department and saying, hey, I just had a quick question.
So that's our, our rules and policies, that's why we should discuss it. I don't think we should, I, I think our town, we deserve to protect the town administrator from rogue behavior or inconsistent behavior. It's not good for the departments, but we, it shouldn't be a blanket, you don't get to talk to them. I mean, there's a middle ground. I think, I don't know how we can revise this to say, maybe we just say that, on routine matters that don't require town administrator input or contradict the mission of the department, there's no reason this law may can't be enforced. Don't laugh, but.
It's like, it'd be like an A and R law. It doesn't need the approval, but you have to approve the fact that it doesn't need approval, so. You'd have to get my approval to talk to things that don't need my approval. Could you do that one?
No.
Again, I, you guys in the town hall, you're talking to the department heads, and that's not my.
But these are policies that are set forward. I mean, when I read it, I kind of felt the same way. There were a few really strong things that were a little too aggressive.
Well, this was drafted in two thousand seventeen, prior to it.
Yeah.
Which is why I felt there's a little.
I would've put that in also, though.
Well, so this is what I wanna say.
Like, I don't want that. I want the.
Conceptually, I get.
That's my question. Jim, you know, obviously, you've read through this policy. Is this something that you think is needed?
You know, it, it's like when I'm doing a union contract. You, you put stuff on a union contract that doesn't apply to ninety-nine percent of the people who work for you. It might not apply to anybody who works for you at that time, but you put it in because you never know when you're gonna get that.
You need something.
Board member who is going to be, well, I don't care, I'm a one of the selectmen, I'm going to meet with the DPW, they're gonna pave this street, I'm gonna tell them what to do. And then I, the town administrator has nothing to back him up, saying, no, you can't do that. That's not allowed. So you, you need to have a policy for when you have, again, this is gonna sound bad, when you have a rogue board member who's outside, you know, the board says, four members say we're gonna do this, and the fifth member says, well, I don't agree with that, so I'm gonna go around the department heads, I'm gonna go around the town administrator, and I'm gonna get what I want by going to the department head and saying, if you don't do this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you. And, and the department head's only recourse is either come to me or come back to the board. So you do need these policies and procedures so a board member knows, this is where I'm supposed to be operating.
Yeah. And, and a couple of things, I think we need to make sure we go through and scrub it to be gender neutral. There, there are, well, most places it says is her, there are some. Yeah. Areas where it says her. So I just wanna make sure that that's all a little, you know, that we're.
It could be on purpose.
That we're taking out. I also, under appointments, I actually disagree with your changes there, John. Uh, so it's page nine, but page one hundred and forty-five out of one hundred and seventy-nine tonight, so we're gonna look at, yeah, so. Um, it's in blue, the reason being that, sure, our objective is to handle new appointments in May, but let's be reasonable, you know, last five years without getting on the board. It just doesn't get done, there's too much going on.
Sure.
And I think it's, it doesn't make sense to set an unreasonable expectation. So I don't have a problem with July effective August, as was originally written. I think, Lorraine, you had some input on that as well, right? Yeah, I can revise that. But the main points we need you to talk on tonight and before. Yeah. These four main points are the things that, you know, both John and Karen gave feedback on. Yeah. As being a problem. The other thing, like, you know, to your point, the appointments and being gender neutral, I can go through after your feedback tonight and make all the changes and send you like a final draft. Yeah, I agree. So the priority items were major discussion points that were identified, what you just talked about, and I think you decided to leave him.
My bone, Derek.
We got on board a second one, was going directly to departments and employees. Page five, uh, three, item B. Individual board members making statements to the public before talks are discussed with the entire board was another big issue. Page five. Page five, item three, item B. Yeah, that was one, my notes are not clear, you know, so we're talking about senior center, can we not, well, we have.
So I think, I think if there's a distinction, in a hearing, if there's a hearing coming before the board, you should not be discussing anything. You've got way into the end of the hearing, all the information's there, because you're making a really kind of a traditional, quasi-traditional vote on that. You know, I guess you're right. You, you don't necessarily want to prejudge things, but there are times where you hear things, and you're like, this is my position.
Yeah, these are ridiculous.
But this is what, this is, remember? I don't know, I guess it's hard to say. I mean, you, you try not to prejudge something, but sometimes you hear things and you're like, that's my position, no.
Yeah, I mean, look, if somebody, I as an elected official can make a promise to whatever I want to promise. I'm not, I, I'm not encumbering the board, I'm, it's like me, it's my opinion. And if I'm ill-informed, well, then, then that's just unfortunate if I'm ill-informed. Like, that's on me as an individual. So I think three B should be stricken, because any, hopefully, reasonable, good, intelligent, representative, elected official would want to hear the pros and the cons. Like, that's just basic. And to restrict my speech because I haven't heard all sides of the story is not something that I really feel is appropriate.
You're, you're not a judge.
I'm a lawyer here to give you.
You're not a judge here to take a decision.
Right.
Where you need to be impartial and objective. I mean, generally, you are, but you hear from constituents, you hear from neighbors and I'm saying passionate, you might say, this is my feeling, or that. I mean, the hope is that you are objective and listen to both sides without being prejudiced or biased, but I think, you know, that's part of the product, the point of being elected.
Exactly.
You take positions on this, and you can't be elected and say, well, I have a position on that. You gotta take decisions. That's kind of the rule, nature of a selectman.
Right, and as Maura says, you're not, if you meet with somebody and say, I absolutely agree with it, that's crazy, we need to talk about it, the other board members may not agree with you. You know, that's okay.
I think it's a minority, it's a strict.
I think it's still.
All right, three B strike, right, guys?
Yeah.
You okay with that, Mr.?
Huh?
What's he?
Okay, the next one was media relations discussion, page nine.
Which one are we working on, by the way? The John's red ones or?
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. I worked on the unedited one, I compared the edited ones. Page nine, media relations discussion. I'm not sure, I know what you said.
I think it was yours, actually, Karen.
I think the media relations discussion was Karen's.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, I had no problems with it.
Oh, I thought it was.
And, yeah, I know Ruth likes to call, you know, Maura all the time.
What?
And then Sean, I, I never get called much, but.
I'm kind of you guys. Uh, I just had, I didn't say comments on media, you didn't have social media? I thought that was a separate thing.
No, it was a separate thing.
Yeah, media relations, I don't have any issues there. Oh, you know, John, the only thing I added was I thought that, as a matter of practice and maybe as a protection against rogue, essentially, is board members will defer statements to the press to the chair as practical or, or his designate, his ever-designee as practical.
The only reason why I say no is because sometimes, you know, you're a little more unavailable or you're not available, and sometimes I'm, especially in a more knowledge, like Sean had on his social passion capacity.
Right.
I'd rather go to talk to Sean, because I feel kind of.
I'm, to Jim's point about rogue members, um, it's, so that's why I said, is as his ever-designee or as practical, um, there have been other communities where, like, youth, it was a Ford would know them something, and the one who dissented went out and, and made it a very loud statement. It did not reflect on the board's decision appropriately. That was my concern. I mean, I'd much rather, you know, grab that microphone, but I think. When it's a statement from the board.
Well, that's a good point.
This just says press releases, though, so that was, that was my suggestion.
This, this talks about a press release that issued by the board, that this is the position of the board.
Right.
I mean, if the board voted four to one on something now, and you voted against it, you have the absolute right afterwards to tell Ruth.
This is why I didn't.
You know, I agree with them, I think the board's crazy, they're out of that, blah, blah, blah. That's your opinion as a member, but you're not speaking for the board. And I think this is more of a policy dealing with speaking for the board, because, again, individual members, you're elected officials, you, you're entitled to your opinions, you're entitled to vote how you want and express those opinions. Sometimes it will impact, are we far poorly on the board? But you're not speaking for the board, and I think that's the distinction that they're trying to draw.
Okay. We can say that in there, right?
Yeah, we can clean it up a little bit.
Jim and I.
Take some big notes.
Yeah, I like that, that's better. Okay, and then the last one was, there's nothing in there about social media. And, you know, that.
We have social media policy.
That, I give all credit to Lorraine. Well, we do have a social media policy that's separately, but the selectmen don't sign that.
I think it's something to consider.
Well, we have some legal obligations, so I could write up some words for your final review, too.
Well, that's what our council told me about my pages, I had to very carefully make sure that it, that it was clear that I was speaking as an individual, just like.
It's a good idea.
Reflection of the board's, of a position of mind.
Right, and other board members cannot go on the other page and say, you're right, Karen, I agree with you.
Right, open meaning of.
Because then you get an open meaning violation, so.
It would make, that would help with the, and if you could have a page, you can't publicly deny anybody access to it, so we still understand.
As a public official?
Public official, it's a public official page.
You can't block anything or anything like that.
I didn't either, that's good.
Nancy, thank you.
Sean says I've done block them now. And I, I. Nancy. Nancy.
Okay. So, um, I'm gonna take your comments and revise a final draft.
Okay. Can we go to Tuesday then?
Maybe, I mean, the nineteenth meeting, maybe.
Well, that's a good idea, let's, let's review it before town meeting. In our ninth, our sixth.
Yeah, you guys got nothing to do, so why not hook you up?
I'll try to get it done by the nineteenth. Oh, you don't care, because you, it's not gonna mind sometime.
We can boil this down.
All right, it's side effect, actually.
Yeah. Same.
All right.
Well, you go home, too.
Lorraine, thank you.
Old business taken care of, let's get to the new business. Let's get to, uh, let's go through this, we need to do one-day wine and malt licenses.
Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to lavishly done catering for an event at the Citro Maritime Center on May tenth, two thousand nineteen, from six P M to nine P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want me to just regolf all of them?
Yeah.
Lavishly done catering for an event at the Citro Maritime Center on May nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, from twelve P M to three P M.
Second.
Lavishly done catering for an event.
We can do them all at once.
He's doing consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lavishly done catering for an event at the Lucky Pink Cafe on June first, two thousand nineteen, from seven P M to ten P M.
That's a motion to move the board second to approve a one-day wine and malt license. Uh, motion by Ms. Cameron, seconded by?
Vignani, over the second.
Ms. Vignani.
Ms. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye. Move the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to Weaver Restaurant for an event at the Citro Maritime Center on June twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, from five P M to nine P M.
Motion by Ms. Cameron, seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye. Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to Weaver Restaurant for an event at the Citro Maritime Center on July twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, from twelve P M to three P M.
Motion by Ms. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
Can't believe it's somewhere already.
Discussion on a new drainlaiders, layers license for Walsh management.
Move the board of selectmen to approve the drainlaid license for Walsh management.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we're going on to discussion vote, board and committee appointments. It should be interactive, right?
These are really quick, I printed them for you, just to.
Yes, they're right here.
In front of you.
Can I read?
Go ahead, Karen. You wanna do it?
No, you go, bro.
All right. Move the point of quality, move it for a term of one year until its successor is named. Agent of veterans benefits, Donald Knapp, archivist Betty Foster, assistant town accountant Mary St. Sime, how do you say that?
St. Sime.
St. Sime. Custodian of tax-free property, Hannah Avitav Talavi.
Avitav.
I'm sorry. Custodian veterans graves, Donald Knapp, bear housing officer Jim Madron. Fence spiorer Paul Murphy, field driver Neil Duggan, licensing agent Sergeant Gerald, uh, Gerald, Gerald O'Brien, local auction permit agent Pam Avitav Lee. Mass Bay Transportation Authority Albanger, Metropolitan Area Planning Council Brad Washburn, South Shore Recycling Cooperative Shama Tripe, South Shore Regional School District Representative Jack Manning, surveyor of lumber slash measure of wood and bark, Albanger, tree warden Michael Green, and defense agent Donald Knapp.
Motion by Ms. Cameron, seconded by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, moving on to, is there another one for?
There's a separate piece of paper.
For waterways.
Yes.
And also. Reap appointments of Brian Kelly, David Freeman to the Waterways Commission.
Oh, David Freeman's.
Move to appoint, move to reappoint Brian Kelly, David Freeman to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years, until his successor is named, in completion of the conflict of interest law, online training programs completed within three days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye. I don't know, Mr. Freeman, wow.
Move to appoint Rick Murray to the commission, for a term of three years, until his successor is named, in completion of the conflict of interest law, online training programs completed within three days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Vignani.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I just wanna point out that we have had Mr. Morris's application here, so I just think it's important to note that publicly. He's been here since January, he's the only applicant that we have at this time for this position.
And he's out of town, the boys who'd be there tonight. Okay, Mr. Danny, you took it.
He has not missed a meeting in two or three months, he's been at every one, correct?
That is correct. Oh, that's good, good advocate. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye, and.
Thank you very much.
Finally, move to reappoint Conley Ford to the board of registers for a term of three years, until his successor is named, in completion of the conflict of interest law, online training programs completed within three days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Cameron.
You only have one more day that you have to say that in.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Donald. Um, thank you very much.
Good night.
There it is, all right, liaison reports. Any liaison reports?
Just three quick things, tomorrow, senior center, council on AJ, senior center, record facility, last public information session at the library at seven o'clock. And of course, everyone knows, Monday is town meeting, and next Saturday is town election. And don't forget Mother's Day on Sunday. I'm talking to Jake and Kelly.
Isn't there a few vitamins?
Mother's Day, yeah, vitamins, Mother's Day race, and mine on Sunday morning, I, I don't have the time.
Actually, you don't have the time.
You have it.
Should be, we have had nothing but rain.
They, uh, twelve o'clock, mine at Beach Parking Lot, the Citro firefighters, little fourteen sixty-four, Mother's Day race, oh, I'm sorry, it starts at eight A M, goes till twelve. It's wicked fun.
Eight A M.
So you get out of the house and let your mother sleep in, that's the whole plan here?
Any liaison reports, if none?
Uh, the whole committee is gonna be presenting to us in the next meeting or two, their capital plan and operations. Um, they're doing a great job. And Sister City Court, we met with them last night, and they are getting all geared up for our trip, our trip over there, and all the, all the meetings that we have, and all the.
What date is that, Ben?
Ten, ten.
Two, ten.
Any others? Maybe did the correspondence, right?
Yep.
Approval of the minutes for April twenty-third, twenty nineteen?
Still.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Cameron, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Finally, motion to adjourn?
And signed off.
Signed off, it's motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Cameron. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Folks, good night, thank you very much.
Congratulations. And I just think if done.